Oh, this is on.
All right, Mr. Ash, will you be ready?
Right, right, right. And you guys, the best.
Good thing.
And this is actually kind of a closed.
That is a good thing, huh?
It's not looking at anybody, you know, it's not like the prices.
In fact, it's very much can't be a win-win for us, I think. So we're just trying to help.
Of course. All right. It's always good when you, when you, your leader is giving up praise. It's a little late.
You're on.
Right.
You two are on my side, so you don't.
I do not.
You got the prayer? Who does the pledge?
Okay, okay.
Good evening. I call the Gastonia City Council meeting for June the third in order. Councilman Pierceall will have our prayer and then we will stand for the pledge allegiance.
If you bow your heads with me. Father, we come to you tonight with open minds, asking you to fill us with your wisdom, to make the decisions that are best for the citizens of Gastonia. We ask you to place your protective hand on those that protect us and law enforcement, first responders, also the men and women that serve so bravely in our military. We thank you for the beautiful weather we're experiencing and the, just the surroundings that we get to enjoy every day as citizens of Gastonia. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Bridgeman is, is not here tonight, as you can tell. Is there a motion to excuse him from this meeting?
Second.
Second here, ma'am.
Any discussion?
One question.
Yes.
Is he going to be able to call in today, Ash? When we need?
Yes, he has requested to be called in on item number nine. So at the appropriate time, I will ask.
In fact, so as a point of order, if I could just point out, it wouldn't technically be correct to excuse him, okay?
Oh, because he is calling in?
Right, because he is calling in, so.
Okay.
If you want to withdraw that, if whoever made that motion would withdraw it.
I'll withdraw in a second.
Thank you. Okay, the adoption of the agenda. As you can see at the place, there is a, an added item, which is an update on recreation payment in lieu of fees. And if, if it's the council's wishes to add that to the agenda, we can approve the agenda with item nine A as an addition.
Motion to approve with the addition.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So that update on recreation payment will be item number nine A.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Presentation. Mr. Jeff Wise. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Thank you very much.
Jeff is the executive director of U.S. National Whitewater Center, and he's going to be giving the update on U.S. National Whitewater Center.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to present. And this kind of brings back some memories. I was, guess I was back here in 2002, 2003, we were working through what was then known as the Local Government Services Agreement, which was a intergovernmental agreement involving city of Gastonia, Gaston County, Belmont, Mount Holly, and city of Charlotte, as well as Mecklenburg County, where collectively they were providing payments that would total over a seven-year period, twelve million dollars, in, in exchange for the U.S. National Whitewater Center providing economic development and park and recreation services if we could get the U.S. National Whitewater Center built. And as you know, we opened the center back in 2006, late 2006, and we've been in operation ever since. This past year, at the end of 2013, the last of those Local Government Services payments was due, and it was the expiration of that LGSA period. So all of those payments are now, have been made by Gastonia, and we are, we are through with that contract. One of the purposes of my presenting to you today is to let you know a little bit about five hundred thousand dollar investment from the city of Gastonia, what, what you've gotten, not only in the past seven years, but really over what we anticipate happening over the next several years coming forward. So I'm going to walk you through a few quick numbers, if I'm doing this right. If I'm moving forward, if I'm just advancing. I put a couple of quick numbers together for you, and this is all based on 2013. Back in 2013, we had over seven hundred and forty thousand annual visitors to the U.S. National Whitewater Center. When we've originally made our pro forma, the estimate would be that we would do a little over three hundred thousand visitors. So it's significantly greater than what we considered, which is great. There are challenges that come with that, but growth pain and other things, but we've been very successful in getting the folks out to the center. That makes us number five in the state as far as tourist destinations or attractions. So that, that gives you some frame of reference. This past year, we did a little over sixteen million in gross revenue as far as sales go, in gross sales. We had originally estimated that that would total at our highest point, about twelve million, so we're doing a good bit better than we had originally estimated there. We, this past year, generated about three million, just a little over three million, three hundred thousand in net ordinary income. We are a not-for-profit, and that's why we use the term net ordinary income. We employ about a thousand people, just over a thousand people annually. I want to be real clear on this, though, the vast majority of those are seasonal employees. So when you, when you look at that thousand, don't think that we've got a thousand offices sitting down there, but we do have a thousand employees on our payroll, which creates its own challenges and, and, and fun as well. But to give you some number, that'll give you a frame of reference for that, our annual payroll this past year was just over seven million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's a, that's a lot of, a lot of people we've got on the payroll. Since 2004, when we first, excuse me, 2005, when we first broke ground, we've invested over fifty million dollars into the U.S. National Whitewater Center. In other words, that's the capital investment that has been made in the center. I'm going to walk you through a little bit about some of the, some of the future plans, but first, give you a sense of what's going on out there now. What we've tried to do is, we started with about two hundred and seventy acres, we're now up to about five hundred and fifty acres that we now manage, and we have over twenty-seven water slash land-based activities. So most of you know, we've got the largest, still is the world's largest artificial whitewater course, but we also have a host of land-based activities, so we're open year-round. If you come out there in February or January, when the weather's good, you have a great opportunity to get out, do some of the zip lines, go up in the canopy tour, climb, go mountain biking, we're open year-round. Give you a real quick sense, our fiscal year runs from November one through October thirty-first. We are, while everybody says, are you open year-round? We say, yes, water's only running basically from March first through the end of November. We lose money in November through March on a monthly basis, but we make money in the months of April through October. So those, that, that, that excess in those months covers those, those losses in those earlier, in those first months of the season. But we are open year-round, and even though we're losing money, say, in January, because we've got a certain amount of fixed cost, our incremental costs are not great, and so that's why it is still advantageous for us to stay open, just to knock off some of that, chip away at some of that fixed cost. So that'll give you a sense of that. Other, so in addition to those twenty-seven activities that we now have, when we first opened, we had seven, so we now have twenty-seven. This past year, we've done over seventy-two races that are out there, so that gives you a sense of the activities as well. Also, most of you know, we have a good bit of music festivals, fireworks, a number of things like that out there. This past year, we've had over eighty musical performances out there. We've got Robert O'Keen coming up in a week, or week and a half, we've got Bruce Hornsby coming up in, in July. These are free concerts, y'all. You come out, and you got to pay five bucks for parking, but it's free. Come on out and enjoy it, and we'll, for Bruce Hornsby, somebody like that, we'll get probably seven to eight thousand folks out there, and it's a free concert. And that'll be over the Fourth of July, there'll actually be another great music, musical performance by Mo, another band, the following day. So eighty performances, we have over twelve festivals. Everybody's probably familiar, we've got everything from Tuck Fest, which is the three-day sports festival, to the Fourth of July, the Memorial Day festivals, we have our Bring Your Own Boat, which I promise y'all, if you pick one festival to come to, that's the ones where people build their boats, they bring them, they take them down the comp channel, and I promise you, most people don't make it down the comp channel on those boats. It's a lot of fun, and it, it gets a lot of people there to see the carnage. Major events, most of you know, when we were trying to do this, we said, we're going after Olympic trials. Well, we've been successful, we've got the twenty-eight Olympic trials, 2008, and we also got the twenty-twelve Olympic trials, and that's for whitewater slalom. And so we've been successful in Grant, in both of those. We've had Tuck Fest, which we are on track to make that the largest outdoor sports festival in the U.S., and that's only been in its second year, so we're, we're very pleased with that. We also have an Exter event coming up in, in July as well. So a lot of big-name national events to go along with those, those seventy-plus races. Lot of national media, most of you know, over the years, and I'm, I'm very, very pleased to say, while we certainly have had the local media that has presented it in favorable light, in less than favorable light at times, the national media has gushed on this thing because it's such a unique and different asset. We've been, and I've just put a few of them here for you, everything from USA Today, Washington Post, New York Times. My favorite, they wrote a great article about us in The Economist, and that's one of my favorite. I mean, things you would expect, Outside Magazine, Men's Journal, but they did the CBS Morning News, Morning Show out there, presented it live from there. So we've been able to get a lot of those types of, of media coverage, as well as a real, a large number of feature films. Most of these you're not going to know because they haven't come out yet, but they've just, three weeks ago, spent several days filming a new feature film out there, and about, probably three months before that, they were filming another one out there. Real important to our community, and everybody knows the economic impact of those, but it is also a great, great importance, I think, for people to get out there and know more about our community through those folks that are coming on a national basis to, to spend money with us and, and, and create those films and know what we can offer here in the community. I ran some numbers, and I just went back and I said, all right, let me look at the last two years, because I think, you know, the, the numbers jump all over the place, and as we've done better, we've been able to do more. But one of the things I wanted to make sure everybody understood too is, and this is something most people don't know that we do, since we are a 501(c)(3), and as you know, our mission is to build stronger communities through promoting healthy, active outdoor lifestyles, encourage family and civic interaction, and promoting environmental stewardship. But one of the things we do that's very traditional, and like any philanthropic organization, what we told you we would try to do is provide scholarships to those that needed economic assistance and being able to access what we do at, at the Whitewater Center. We do it two ways. One is all of us underwrite each other. In other words, what we try to do is create a price that is, we don't, if people call us and say, hey, I've got so-and-so group coming out, can I get a discount? We look at everybody and say, nope, this is our base price because we're trying to get everybody a fair price to promote access. So we don't have this dynamic pricing that charges one entity a lot higher in order to make somebody else pay a little, a little less. We try to make it as, as inexpensive as possible for everybody. The other thing we do do is, through the Dixon Scholarship, we have generated, or we have provided over three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars over the last two years for students totaling eleven thousand, six hundred and twenty-two students and teachers in order to bring them out there for team building and environmental education programs. And we've done that with, primarily with schools in both Mecklenburg and Gaston County, but we've reached far outside of that area as well. We've certainly reached down into South Carolina, Union School, Union County Schools, and, and really throughout. So while they're certainly an emphasis in our, in our backyard, we certainly will reach outside too, because we think it is important that these kids get the access. Another piece to that is, as you know, people are always coming to us saying, hey, we've got a fundraiser for this organization or that. And since 2009, we have donated over a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars worth of, of passes to those types of organizations as well. Swiftwater rescue training, most of you remember when we were planning to build this, that was one of the things we were really hopeful to be able to do, is provide swiftwater rescue training to emergency management personnel. Since we've opened, we've provided, we have certified over seven hundred and seventy different emergency management personnel and swiftwater rescue training, one or two. For the next three years, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, we've got some catching up to do. We paid off our loans this past December, which was great news for us. Most of you remember probably, we had to restructure the notes, the, all of our lenders wrote off a total of, make sure I get my math right, right at twenty-six million dollars, very close to that. They thought that the most we would be able to pay was six million, based on what we were doing those first two years of operation. But because of the great growth that we have had, we were able to pay off the term A note as well as the term B note. The term B note, most of y'all remember, when we restructured, the banks thought there was no chance we'd be able to pay it. They always create a hope note, in the case of, you know, hopefully you can pay it, we were actually able to pay that one off as well. So the challenge has been that every single dollar that we have had, both the LGSA dollars as well as our own net operating income, has had to go to paying off that, that debt, which is a good, good problem to have. The downside is, we need bathrooms, we need waste, waste management, we need parking, we need basic infrastructure. We are woefully behind on a number of things. We have been able to spend about seven hundred thousand a year on a cap, almost eight hundred thousand in capital improvements, so we haven't fallen completely behind, but most of you know, if you've come out there on a festival, you'll see lines at the bathrooms, you'll see lines to get in. We back the traffic up to four eighty-five routinely. We've got a lot to do to try to catch up. And so we're, if you look at our capital spend, and it's a little blurred out here, but we're planning to spend over the next three years, about four million in capital improvements that'll help address a lot of those basic, what I call sort of unsexy things, such as bathrooms and just, you know, storage space, all the stuff that's not fun to spend money on, but you got to do. We are spending four million, we're planning to spend four million on new activities, and that's critically important. At the end of the day, we got to give more, more reason for people to come out. But we're also very, very focused on the land in that area. They're gobbling up that, what little bit of undeveloped land is in the area, and we want to make sure that we're in there getting to it as quickly as we can as well, in order to really pursue our mission, which in its most simply stated terms, y'all, is we're trying to build simply the greatest backyard in all of the United States. And if you think about it, what do you do if you're going to have that? If you had three million dollars a year to put into the greatest backyard, you'd simply go out, buy more land, and create more fun stuff to have your friends come over and play in that crazy with you, and that's what we do. What does it mean to you guys? You've seen some of the numbers, you see all those. This is the most important thing. You will hear people, Bill Karsarfen will tell you how many hotel nights they get as a result of us. People will give you some of that direct economic development impact. That's not my focus, those are great. I love the fact that people are buying gas on their way up here from Atlanta, or when they're coming in from Greenville, that's all great. I don't try to measure that. What I care most about is that we're creating a brand for our communities that says to people that this is an exciting, vibrant place to be, whether you're coming to visit, or whether you're coming to move your company, start your family, move your family, we're trying to make this place more vibrant, more compelling, along with everybody else and everything that we're, everybody else is doing. So we want to be a part of that matrix. And so when you look at what we're doing out there, when you drive up eighty-five, if you're coming back from Raleigh, or coming back from Richmond, you'll see those billboards we've got out there. We're trying to say to the world, we're doing something fun here, we're doing something that's extremely exciting, and we can compete against cities like Austin, Texas. We can compete against cities like Boston, San Francisco, these places that younger, dynamic talent is trying to go, we've got to compete for that, and we think we can do it in this community for a whole host of reasons. We've got great schools, we've got great quality of life in so many other different categories, infrastructure, everything else, but we still have to convey that hook to everybody to say, this is a dynamic, interesting place to be, and we think the Whitewater Center is a great asset to help do that. Gaston County's doing a phenomenal job of, of taking advantage of it. If you go onto the Gaston County website, you'll see Whitewater Center plaster all over the front of it. Go to the Gaston Travel and Tourism Authority, their website, same thing, they're embracing it, they're grabbing it, and that's what we want, not because it puts butts in boats, we love that, that's great. What we care most about is that when people are talking about our community, when they're in Poughkeepsie, when they're in, you know, Dallas, Texas, they're going, that's a cool place, and that's what we're all about, and we think you guys are doing a great job of taking advantage of that. That's where we are, that's where we're going. There's a lot of specifics, I will be glad to provide you, but I know that I will probably be taking way too much time already. But also, when Ed and I were talking, a couple of things that Ed said, let's talk about, what are we doing going forward, but also talk about the LGSA payment with the dispute. Most of y'all may know, Mecklenburg County has not made their final payment. We have sat down with them, with, with staff, and basically, their position is, in public, they're telling everybody, we've done so well, we don't need it. That's not what the, you know, the document's not about whether we need it, the document, the LGSA, has a very clear formula for whether it is due in owing by those governmental entities. We have provided a calculation, we've, to the governmental entities every year, saying what we think the formula should be and how it works. We have received payment from every single governmental entity, including Mecklenburg County, up until this year. We have now asked our law firm to review the matter for us and issue an opinion letter, which they have just about completed. We're waiting on Grant Thornton, to, an accounting firm, to also issue an opinion letter as well as our auditing. And we are, are more than confident that that is an amount that is due in owing. As y'all know, the city of Gastonia has paid it, the city of Belmont has paid it, and the county of Gaston has paid it. City of Charlotte, we're meeting with on Monday next week with representatives from there. We believe that they will, that they will also see that it is due in owing based on, on the formula, and we're also meeting with representatives from the city of Mount Holly next week to do the same. Once that is done, and we believe that all five of the remaining entities will pay, then we think that Mecklenburg County will see the light as well.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Questions? Councilman Kimball.
Thank you, ma'am. Couple, just, I, I need to get a little bit more information from you. I, I have to tell you, a little, maybe naively so, a little surprised at your seven million dollar payroll. How many of those are full-time employees? And within the ambit of full-time employees, how many are administrative? How many are out in the rafting areas, so to speak? And what is your average hourly rate?
We're going to be using averages on the hourly rate.
Okay.
And that will range, because we do have a, a real host of, and I've not done it, I've not run an average based on the, the, the large number of folks that are, for example, raft guides. Raft guides make typically anywhere from ten to twelve dollars an hour, but then they also do get tips. And they're a large part of that, of that number. You'd also have our Land Sport Guides, which are in that same range, but then we've got a number of maintenance folks and skilled labor that are hourly, that are making, you know, quite, doing quite well in the, you know, twenty and thirty dollar an hour range.
Really?
So you'll see that. However, the salaried staff runs right around a hundred, so the rest of that is about nine hundred, that would be seasonal staff.
Okay. And how does that equate to, you know, the area standards as far as your skilled work, you know, your skilled maintenance and things like that?
You know, being very, very blunt about it, you've got to pay market. You can't attract the talent you need if you're not paying market rate. So we're paying market rate. And, you know, we will try, and we're not that successful with it, in certain areas, but in certain areas, we're very successful. There is a real, you know, some of our folks are really driven by the mission, and so they'll come to you and they'll say, hey, I'd rather be working here than anywhere else because I believe in the mission. And that's typical with a lot of not-for-profits. But that sometimes doesn't matter as much in, in certain areas.
Thank you. And second, just second brief question, have you thought about, have you shopped around naming rights as a, as a way to raise money, and maybe not for the whole center, but for portions therein?
We, we, we generate less than two hundred thousand, but, but right at two hundred thousand off sponsorships. They're very small sponsorships. We had originally in our pro forma thought we would be doing much more in sponsorships, but we have found that rightly or wrongly, we do not want to go too far in selling that, that, that commercial space. It creates a dynamic that starts to detract from what we're trying to do out there, so we have to be very, very subtle with it, and quite frankly, we're, we're not sure that it's worth what it would, what the revenue we generate off that.
Thank you, that's all I have, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, if I could interject one follow-up question before you go to the next councilperson. Jeff, I thought the city of Charlotte had required some sort of naming about the city of Charlotte back when we did those additional concerts.
No, the, the mayor asked for that, that was Mayor McCrory at the time. He kept saying, I don't want this to become, you know, we were, it was originally in just, in the pro formas, it was the Charlotte Whitewater Park.
Right.
And then we said, no, 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 this is much bigger than that, it's the U.S. National Whitewater Center, and the mayor didn't like that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought.
We, we, we stood firm on that one.
Councilman Carlin.
Jeff, I think I'm the only one sitting up here that sat up here when you came and presented to us way back in 2006.
Other than Ed Nash.
Right, right, so. And I think, you know, you know, I congratulate you, you know, the center's been extremely profitable, successful, and it's been beneficial to the community at large. I, I think, you know, there may be a subtle difference between contractual and maybe perceived, you know, benefit, and, and, and again, it's just what I remember, but, you know, back at that point in time, you know, we were, we were being asked to, you know, in, in good faith, to provide some, you know, some support, and of course, as it, as it began, it was, you know, of the impression that if, if the center needed it, they would get it, you know, annually, and that's been the case, and that's, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. But I think going forward, you know, what, what, again, I also felt, the impression I got was that there could or would be something that would be coming back to these communities in a very tangible way, you know, in terms of support of our own recreational facilities. And you could clarify on that a little bit, but, you know, I got the impression that, you know, we were kind of like investors in a sense, in that at some point in time, you know, if we put some money out and, and get you going, then at some point in time, as you became profitable, that we might be able to see a few dollars come to support our own recreational programs.
And, and thank you. I think that the way we, I'm always, I'm always hesitant to characterize impressions because I'm not sure what somebody else's was versus what we conveyed and so forth. So to, to be very, very blunt about it, what we've said in the LGSA and what we've told everybody is, and at the time was, we, to the extent that we're able to generate proceeds beyond what it takes to operate the facility, we would absolutely be reinvesting those in efforts to pursue our mission. And it says that directly in the LGSA, and that was the idea broadly stated. And a lot of people would say, what does that mean? And we said, well, that means that we will be contributing or supporting those things where we can that will, that will promote healthy, active outdoor lifestyles, encourage family civic interaction, environmental stewardship. So whether that means that it's, you know, on, on the streets of, of Gastonia, whether it's the streets of Stanley, whether it's, you know, on, on the property adjoining the Whitewater Center, I can't speak to that right now. All I can tell you is that, given where we are right now, where literally, we just spent probably about a million two of our capital reserve leaving us almost nothing, we're, we're in a real, we're in no position to reach out yet and commit to anybody to say that we would be push, putting dollars into a, a project in, say, the town of Stanley, or in, say, the town of Ranlow. It's not that I would tell you we would or wouldn't, that's not my, I'm not in that position, that would be my board that would do that, but my board, and I, I can tell you this, where they would direct, directly tell you in meeting or on the street, is they'd say, we have a fiduciary duty to make sure we take care of the Whitewater Center first, we're probably two to three years before we could ever consider stepping outside of that very tight, narrow band of all of the needs that the center has. Having said that, what I want to be very, very clear about, though, is whether we're investing in a ball field, or whether we're investing in a, you know, a, a project on the greenway, part of the reason I want to make sure everybody saw the numbers, we are investing in the kids that are needing, you know, at the schools that are needing the access to the outdoors. And so we think we can be most effective in funneling those dollars on that basis to what, and, and basically, if we've already created a fifty, fifty million dollar investment, let's get them there to play, and we'll make it a base, available based on a scholarship basis. The other piece is, as far as. The other piece is, as far as we say the payoff is, only other things such as branding and so forth, but those direct, you know, capital dollars coming back into Gastonia, we would still be several years away before we would be able to do that from a fiduciary standpoint.
And I appreciate that, but I won't let you forget it.
And I wouldn't expect...
So, but...
And I think it's a great conversation, but I, and I think my board would tell me to tell you, it's a good conversation, we need to keep having it, but at this point, all we can commit to is tending to the knitting that is right in front of us, that is a challenge.
Yeah, and I also appreciate that, too. What I think would be good, though, for your own public relations, would be when you speak about the scholarship, you know, aid that's been provided, if you could get a breakdown of how many of those students and teachers came from Gaston County, I would not even necessarily care if they came directly from Gastonia, but if you could at least give that to one of our staff people at some point, to see what percentage of those scholarships are coming across the river.
Right.
Because I would say that I would hold your feet to the fire on that, to make sure that we are adequately at the table when it comes to those kinds of benefits, you know, so, you know. Because we, I mean, you know, Gaston County contributed $3 million to this collectively, you know, so we would hope that we would get a, you know, a good shake when it comes to that kind of benefit, so.
And we're very mindful, like in anything like that, we don't sit there and say, "One for Gaston and one for Mecklenburg and one for Union," but we're very, very mindful of distribution and in an equitable fashion.
Well, if you could get that information, that would be great. And again, you know, we want to make sure that our, our students and teachers are made well aware of those opportunities.
Yep.
And that would be great, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let me just follow up, and then we'll get with you, Councilman Gallagher. When you're getting that report...
Yes, ma'am.
Could you also add how many Gaston County employees that you employ?
Sure.
Either seasonal or full-time?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Gallagher.
Mr. Wise, you are a 501(c)(3) organization.
501(c)(3).
Yeah, (c)(3). And it looks like, you know, following off Councilman Curlin here, we contributed $71,000 this year. However, your financial statement said that you had net income of this year of $3 million and last year of $3 million. That means you made $3 million.
Correct.
So why would we be giving $71,000 to y'all if you're making money?
The way that the, the way that the LGSA was constructed was that the payment, the LGSA payments were contractually obligated, and we would then waive those payments if not only our operating expenses exceeded our revenues, but also our debt service. So it was the debt service that still made those payments required under the LGSA.
But you said in December 2013 that those were paid off.
Right, and the payments that were made were through fiscal year 2012, well, excuse me, 2013. So in other words, when you pay in 2014, that's for the 2013 year, fiscal year. And the debt service was retired in 20, was retired end of December 2013, after our fiscal year.
And the other thing I'd like to say is, you went from seven activities up to 27, and now you're managing 550 acres, which I'm sure costs money to attain. Money that could be coming back to us for recreational purposes within our own communities. Is there anybody that's on your board or on your commission from Gastonia or Gaston County that lobbies for our interest?
There absolutely are.
Is there anybody from Gastonia in particular?
I'm gonna, I'm scared, I'm not sure I know exactly where the lines run, but Gaston residents that I am certain of, Ben Rudisal, she's in Gastonia, Richard Rankin, Dr. Thierfelder, and I'm probably missing one other. We have a nine-member board.
They're on your board?
That's what he said.
They're on your board?
Correct.
You have one board or two boards?
Two, one board. And I'm probably missing somebody else, but that is all I'm thinking of right now. And like I say, we have nine, we just added, we were at eight, we just added a ninth.
I like your facility. I use your bike routes a lot, and I haven't done the zip lines yet, but I've done the water also. And it is a great park, and it's a great facility, but it's the same token, we invested into it, and as Dr. Curlin has said, we're looking for something to come back to our recreational committee, uh, community as well.
I appreciate it.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Wise, for being here and giving us this update, and we will stay in touch.
Thank y'all very much.
Mm-hmm. Okay, moving on. Okay, Gerald Sosby has signed up. Mr. Sosby, if you would give your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Gerald Sosby of 1852 Kendrick Road, Gastonia. I'd like to take this opportunity to let the members of council know that the Gastonia Building and Development Task Force, of which I'm chairman, and staff have come to an agreement on reducing the water and sewer expansion fees for the City of Gastonia. This agreement was negotiated several weeks ago, and no further action from staff has taken place to this date. The Gastonia Building and Development Task Force wants to make sure that this item is moving along, as we feel that council should know about the agreed-upon fee structure reductions before adopting a budget with the old numbers in it. It was a substantial reduction that we've come to an agreement on. On the subject of parks and recreation fees, we would like to point out several items that staff did not mention at the last council meeting in which I was in attendance. First one is the average that Mr. Dellinger suggests is not realistic, in our opinion. Staff member Thor Martin has testified on two occasions at planning commission meetings that the fees were meant to be around $200 per lot or unit. If the average method that Mr. Dellinger suggested is adopted, then the fee is actually being increased from what staff is saying it should have been, or the intent of the fee structure was supposed to be. We cannot understand how a suggesting of averaging numbers that are known to be in error is reasonable on any level. A vote for this methodology, in our opinion, is a vote to increase the fees on the citizens of Gastonia. Staff continues to show council projections based on lot counts that are not realistic, in our opinion. We have been shown no data, other than the numbers of lots of record, that have been approved times the current fee as projected revenue stream for parks and recreation. The true revenue stream is the number of new structures that have been built, or a predicted number of 132 to be built for fiscal year 2014, 2015. Using this number that staff and I utilized in the negotiations for the water and sewer expansion fees, and which staff came up with as a prediction for 2014, 2015, would represent a projected fee collected of 132 lots times $200 per lot, or $26,400 for fiscal year 2014, 2015. We've not seen the numbers in your budget, but we feel that they're gonna be much higher within your budget when you see it. We point out again that the only persons being asked to pay the impact fee for parks and recreation are new home buyers or renters of new properties. No research as to the actual impact that these two groups have on the parks and recreation system has been presented or discussed. The policy simply adds this burden to citizens wanting to live in new homes or apartments. Nowhere the trigger mechanism is in place, other than the person wanting to live in a new type of construction. The Center City Revitalization Housing Committee voted unanimously to repeal the parks and recreation fee as it stands now. Three members of this council are on that committee. The Gastonia Planning Commission voted four to two in favor of repealing the parks and recreation impact fee as it stands now. The Gastonia Building and Development Task Force asks that you carefully review the information being presented by staff for completeness and accuracy. We ask that you carefully consider the actions of the other two committees and commissions on this matter. These two committees or commissions are either members of this council, or are comprised of members appointed by this council because of their expertise in their individual fields. Their decision to repeal the parks and recreation impact fee as it stands now should be backed up by the full council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Dean. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, the council, I'm Michael Dean, I live at 3816 Sherwood Circle, Gastonia. Two weeks ago, I presented my case before you to serve on the ABC Board. I greatly appreciated the vote of confidence I received, and was looking forward to representing you for the next three years, but I find myself here once again asking for your vote to represent you on the Gastonia ABC Board. A comment was made that I had served for 20 years, and that was long enough. I'm not a career politician. I have served at the discretion of this council for three-year terms, and I am very proud of the three of the terms I have served for this council and the other councils before you. I have never run for political office. I have been approached to serve on other boards for many years, and I've always declined because I always wanted to focus my attention on the ABC Board. Please listen to me as I go through some of the years on the ABC Board. When I was appointed, the closest person in age to me was, was some 18 years my senior. Most were in their late 60s and 70s. It was important for us to modernize and upgrade our system with computers, printers, and computerized cash registers. I want you to think about this. We didn't even take debit cards or credit cards. We, we didn't even have internet service. Our employees' morale was very low, mostly because their 40-hour work week was spread over six days, from Monday through Saturday. I finally convinced the board that we could keep all stores open the same hours, including Saturday, our largest selling day, and give employees every other weekend off and still keep the employees' pay within 40 hours. This was a great morale booster. When placed on the board, we had 24 full-time employees with benefits. The Gastonia ABC system was voted by the citizens in 1967, and our employees who had started with this system would be aging out soon. I was fortunate enough to be chairman at the time several individuals would be retiring. The ABC director and I were able to convince the other board members to try and replace any retirees with several part-time employees when it was feasible. They agreed. The plan was a huge success. Some of these part-time employees have worked their way up to full-time and even become store managers. We have gone from 24 full-time to seven full-time and 45 part-time. Now, that's a difficult task, managing 45 part-time employees, but it works, and it saves this city approximately $225,000 profit dollars a year, and that savings goes back to the city. After my last presentation, I was asked about the West End store and the significance of that. As the city grew in the 90s, in the early 2000s, the city annexed property and the area grew. Well, what happened there is the citizens in that area that were citizens of Gastonia, it was more convenient for them to travel to another municipality in another county and buy their controlled spirits. And to me, that just wasn't acceptable. So I finally was able to convince the other board members that we needed to put a store on the West End. So needless to say, that store has become profitable for the last several years. During my years of board service, which include being a part of the $12,838,000 contribution to the city, one of my greatest feelings of all is the small part we played in development of Martha Rivers Park. We also were the fourth board of 168 boards in the state to have a webpage. I know that it take, what it takes to run a successful business. I'm in my 23rd year. Yesterday, for my employees, we had to pay our Social Security, Medicare, FEUDAs, state withholding, and North Carolina unemployment. All these taxes were paid electronically, not by check. If you vote for me to represent you on the board, I feel that I bring a lot of experiences that relates to business and ABC matters. My hair may be gray, but two current members are older than me, and I still do not receive a Social Security check. As I stated before, I would consider it an honor and a privilege to represent you on the ABC Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you will state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name's Ken Gant. I live at 4349 Crossbridge Drive, Gastonia. I thank each and every one of you for serving. Democracy is by nature contentious, but it is the best form of government. You are blessed currently with courteous and good employees and public service employees who are respectful to citizens. Very refreshing. Included in my miscellaneous comments. I implore you not to approve this budget at the same mill, when you've obviously misled the public that you are physical conservatives, have not properly factored in the revaluation. My whopping recent increase property notices have been surprisingly much higher than anticipated based on the Gastonia real estate market. I'm almost 68, and I've watched this revale game many times. I would love to hear the city manager, who I personally like, by the way, tell this, tell the public what the dollar amount of the revale means in windfall to the city. Our taxes in Gastonia are aligned with the real world. I think a two-mill reduction would have been a more equitable equation. My financial mentor always said, "When times are good, they're good; when times are bad, they're really good." For people like us, who have good credit and little cash to spend, we should not, however, forget the poor people and the young struggling workers and retirees on fixed incomes, who are at their end financially in Gastonia. Thank you, Porter and others, for always putting the citizen in the equation. I also implore you not to approve this electric rate increase. Gastonia is a beacon for and loaded with poor people and low-wage people who cannot be expected to bear the brunt of bad decisions. Personally, I think electric cities is a scandal unto itself. I am also amused at the surprise of many citizens, some of my neighbors, to find out that councilmen were elected at large. I believe Gastonia is in the minority of counties in North Carolina that still has this throwback to the old Jim Crow days, or to be changed. A person politically connected, who does not represent what a ward wants or identifies with, can be elected in Gastonia. If you look at the voting records, and I'm not picking on you, Todd, it happened elsewhere, in Ward 4, I think you might see what I mean. Mr. Bridgeman, who is absent, I admire your openness and the way you try to be fair. But Gastonia is not just about downtown or real estate, although that is important. Let us not forget those that are truly struggling with a debt load that our government and Gastonia has placed on our children. I looked at your audit, and I thought you used true statements to circumvent the correct answer. Gastonia is a beacon of hope for people needing jobs in retail and food service, and it continues to be a beacon of hope for homeless people. Gastonia is a city with a heart. But your economic development focus needs to change. These jobs are attracting an increase, people on food stamps, people needing government help. I'll be back next time I get a whopping tax increase. My tax cards shocked me. I hope you've took into consideration, and maybe I'm an exception, how much more in dollars I'm gonna be paying in Gastonia next year. Thank you for your courtesy and your time.
Now we're down to item number one, consent agenda. Well, it's consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number six, which is under the regular agenda, the adoption of fiscal year 2014, 2015 annual budget, City Manager Ed Munn.
Madam, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, the council, I'm Michael Dean, I live at 3816 Sherwood
Madam, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of-
Just a minute.
May I ask something, Mr. Munn, to make a comment before she starts?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Gant was up here talking about the revaluation.
Yes.
That hasn't been completed, has it?
No, it hasn't been completed, and of course, that's the job of a county. Uh, we don't have any input into that process.
Right. And so-
That won't be done until ne- next year.
I don't understand why he has new cards. Because I hadn't sent them out yet. I didn't get one and, uh, and you, uh, value my property. So, uh, I wish he was still here. I wasn't responding, Madam, Madam Mayor, uh, to the public expression, but I thought it ought to be brought out, and that hasn't happened yet.
Good point, good point. Thank you. Uh, also, before we start, if, if it's okay, uh, we will take each one of these, uh, budget items, one, two, three, four, and five, as individual motions, and it, and approve them individually. Okay?
Thank you very much. And, and let me, uh, try to make it a little more complicated than it should have been because of the order of things here. Melody and I are gonna switch them around a little bit.
Okay.
Item five is what we're gonna do first because that talks about changes in the proposed budget. And that's actually on page, uh, six dash fourteen. And there's really, th- this is, th- these are the changes that have occurred since we had, you had a chance to look at your last printed budget. This happens every year. There are always changes. In fact, this past week, there were two changes. Uh, again, it's not even reflected here. Uh, it's always moving. Uh, you're all familiar with the privilege license, license change that the legislature made. It actually surprisingly to everybody, it wasn't supposed to have any effect until, uh, twenty-fifteen. It's actually effective part of it, a little bit of it, next year. So we will probably lose about thirty-five thousand dollars as a result of that, and that's already been signed into law. Also, we received information just today from the county tax office that the personal, commercial personal property listings, we got some more. And so we're actually now seventy thousand dollars ahead of the budget. So we're seventy ahead and we're thirty-five behind. So now we're, you know, and this is, this kind of seesaw stuff goes on all year long. But it, it, but this is really what is described here, uh, at this item five on page six dash fourteen. And Melody, can you explain a couple of the big ones here?
I will. Um, the very first one on page six fourteen, um, looks like a big number, three million seven. And what we did when, um, the state changed your utility, repealed utility franchise tax, they rolled that into the local option sales tax. Originally, in the proposed budget you received, we included that. We added that to that line item in the budget. Afterwards, we had some conversations and talked about it, and we are splitting that out to a separate line item so that we can track that separately from our normal, um, sales tax. That is what we call a utility sales tax, and we wanted to be able to track that, um, separately. So really, there's no change in the total budget. We moved it from one line item and created another one. Um, one of the bigger changes in the proposed budget had to do with the retirement contribution rate. Originally, the state had told us that would be eight-point-oh-six percent. The rate was approved in May at seven-point-oh-seven, which is the same rate. It, it did not change. That was a reduction in, in the proposed budget of three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. About two-hundred-and-forty thousand of that was in the general fund. Um, the next change had to do with the salary accrual each year. We have the first pay period in July that has some days that are ju- in June. Um, we had originally calculated that as one-day accrual. It should be two, so we added that, that one-day accrual. Um, we received from Gastonia County additional information on our economic development grants. That was an increase in those grant expenditures of ninety-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. That is split between the general fund, water and sewer, and electric funds. Thirty-two thousand, six hundred is in the general fund, thirty-one thousand, six forty-two in each of the water and sewer and electric funds. We approved the contract for the eighty-five X, the CATS contract. That was an increase of four thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars in the transit fund. So those are the major changes. There were a couple more that were just line item changes or budget code, what I call budget code changes, that were just moving it from one account to another. So in total, the proposed budget that we gave you, the printed version, was two-hundred-and-twelve million, one ninety-three, eight fifty-two. The version, the ordinances, three ordinances before you tonight is two-hundred-and-twelve million, one fifty-three, oh seventy-seven. It's a decrease of forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
And it, it, it's a good example of how these come back and forth and back and forth. And ba- basically, it's about the same budget that you had before. But it, it does, I think it's interesting to see it because you can see how this stuff moves. You make projections, then all of a sudden, the numbers will move. But you have to be, uh, always, uh, mindful of what's going on and not be surprised. And you gotta be always looking for these, these changes. So because you, one of these days, you can have them all going one way against you, and then that's when you really have to be careful and then begin to slow down your expenditures. But fortunately, for everyone that works against us, we're having one that's working for us. So we're really, this budget that you have tonight, and so would recommend that you approve these changes, which is number five first.
Okay.
That, that is reflected in the, the next item. This is what you have to approve this evening.
Is there a motion to approve, uh, number five under item six? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes?
Question. Uh, Mr. Sosby mentioned in his public expression something to the effect of negotiations and system expansion fees. Uh, is that reflected in this item?
Uh, it's, it's really not. We haven't made any, uh, adjustments one way or the other with regard to our estimates going forward because this matter has been under review by the city council, by, by the committee. So awaiting, we, we, we use these, these, these dollars that Mr. Sosby's talking about for capital projects anyway. So it would impact how much money we would hold for capital projects. And we're not gonna visit that until later on next year when we take a look at our capital project needs with regard to the water plant. And so there, there may be an, a, a difference, for instance, based upon what we decide to do with, with those fees, that whenever we apply a rate, if those fees are down some, then the rate might be a little bit higher, uh, when we have our water and sewer rate increase.
Thank you.
I have one question regarding that, follow-up on that. Uh, is there ongoing negotiations or dialogue with, uh, Mr. Sosby's, uh, task group and the city?
With regard to the water and sewer-
Yes.
-expansion fees-
Yes, uh-huh.
Uh, the, we, we were directed to meet with them, uh, the, at the last Utilities Committee meeting. The city staff recommended the potential of, we're, we're currently at forty percent of the fees that are authorized. City of Gastonia decided not to keep, continue to move those fees up because we really wanted to give the building community a little, little space to be able to get out of the recession. Uh, at our discussion, the last Utilities Committee, the Utilities Committee asked us to meet with the, uh, Mr. Sosby and also to see if something smaller, such as a twenty percent, might work. And so I know Mr. Bombardier and Mr. Sosby have met, uh, and we are then gonna take that, that's awaiting, uh, taking that back to the Utilities Committee and then back on to the City Council.
Okay, so there is ongoing dialogue at this point?
I think the next step is to the Utilities Committee-
Right.
-to have the Utilities Committee consider, do you wanna stay at sixty where you are? Do you wanna go to forty? Do you wanna go to twenty? Where, where, where is, what's the appropriate number?
Uh, Councilman Campbell.
Yes, that, some of what you're indicating, Madam, is, was really part and parcel of item nine A, which I had added to the, uh, agenda, was both the, uh, park and rec fee discussion and that of the, uh, the, the water fees for, that the, Mr. Sosby brought forth with his group.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Uh, then that, we'll get that discussed at a later time, right?
Well, tonight, that's nine-
Yeah, at night, yeah, okay.
That's nine A.
Uh, yeah, that's fine. Uh, there was a motion and a second for, uh, number five from item six. Uh, all in favor? Raise your right hand. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Munn?
Uh, now, now to item one, which is the adoption of the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, fifteen annual budget. And those numbers are indicated here, and they have those changes that we just discussed, and we would recommend, uh, approve.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve, uh, number one under item six?
Motion here.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, Councilman Gallagher.
Ed, does that have the, uh, stormwater fee in there?
Uh, yes, it does. Uh, the stormwater fees that were approved last, uh, November, you know, or right at the end of the year, uh, they are not to be implemented until this year. Uh, the, the, remember, we wanted to give the schools and others time so that they could budget it because it, now, the, the rate goes from two-seventy-five to three-twenty-five, which is the same rate that Belmont has. And again, also, what's in the budget as well is an increase in stormwater capital projects. Uh, and those, those dollars that are projected to come to the city are now programmed for capital projects in stormwater, both on the rideaway, in the rideaway, and also off-rideaway projects.
So the stormwater fee increase is fifty cents per household per month, or six dollars a year?
Correct.
Um, which equals really one McDonald's meal. Um, this increase is not for the overall department, such as an increase in more staff or purchasing more equipment or machinery. It's for the projects only.
Correct. The council, whenever it passed, it also directed the staff to use those dollars exclusively towards capital projects, to, to not use them for administration. And, uh, Mr. Bombardier was very careful in, as that budget was, right? Mr. E, come on up, Flip. When, when, when that budget was constructed, he was very careful to make sure that those dollars went there. Flip.
Mayor and Council, that is correct. Uh, the fee increase will generate slightly under four-hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue. That's not only, but it been put into capital projects. The majority of that has been put into capital projects in citizens' and customers' yards instead of street rideaway.
Yes, sir.
So, right now, Flip, we have eighty-four projects that are currently on a stormwater list. And they've been on this, on that list, um, for quite some time, apparently. Uh, six years. Some people have waited six years in order for us to get to these. Is that correct?
Six or more.
Six or more. So this fee was first implemented in two thousand and two, and it was for two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Correct.
And we're raising it up to three dollars and twenty-five cents, would ec- which equals, uh, Belmont's-
Correct.
-currently. And this is gonna allow us to cut in half the projects that we have out there for citizens.
We would hope that that waiting list would not only be reduced much more quickly, but also the waiting time to cut in half or more.
So that is our rationale for increasing the stormwater fee.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Campbell.
Thank you, Madam. I believe, in fact, and I know that I worked, Flip, I worked with, uh, you and Rusty uh, in some areas in my ward, which off the top of my head, we're waiting over ten years um, for specific, uh, improvements that are now, it's my understanding that they're actually in the bid or will be completing finally the bid process to get those, to get that work done. And in fact, uh, that's what really these earmarks, and that's the correct terminology, but, um, where we're putting that money. And it's actually going directly back into the community and to improve the infrastructure, pardon me, of various parts of the community.
Councilman, you are correct also, and, and this council made several other changes to the overall stormwater program, which we also feel will help expedite particularly some of those, uh, stormwater complaints we get from citizens in their own yards.
Thank you, sir.
And there's a motion on the floor to approve, uh, number one under item six of the regular agenda. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Thank you. Uh, number two, I guess?
Yes.
Is that, is that the order now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Uh, that, that is on, on page six dash eight. And this is a resolution adopting the proposed electric rates for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, fifteen. And again, uh, these are pass-through wholesale rates that come to us, that we're passing through. We are not marking it up. We are not adding anything. Uh, and this, this year, and we hope in the net, within the next two years, that we'll begin to see these numbers start to go down. In fact, some of the projections from Electric Cities actually showed that the rates would go down and over a five- or six-year projection that we could be as low as thirteen percent below what our rates are. Whether that all comes to pass, we at least are trying to only pass through the wholesale rate for now. But we will also be very, I think, I think we need to be very proactive in dealing with Electric Cities to make sure that their formula for next year reflects the direction that they had previously approved in twenty-twelve. And I appreciate the support the councils had in making sure that, that, that we stay on that path so that Gastonia is treated equitably with Huntersville and the others.
Councilman Gallagher.
Since I'm on the Electric Cities Board, um, there is, from, according to the paper, this could be like a six percent increase due to electricity charges. Well, four percent of the increase is because the state is changing the tax percentage. Currently, we're at a three percent tax on our electricity. Uh, the state is moving that up to seven percent. So that's where the four percent's coming at. That's not from the city, and that's not from Electric Cities, and it's not from here. It's coming from Raleigh. Uh, the two percent increase is coming from the cost of fuel and the cost of things that are going on with the, you know, everything goes up, but we are passing that along. We're not adding to it. Um, so that's where the six percent comes from. Um, and I just wanted, you know, to make that statement, that people realize that we're not increasing the rates six percent, but we're actually increasing them two percent and just passing it along as a wholesale rate. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman, um, hearsaw.
Ed, when was the last time the city raised electric rates, not just to pass through, but actually added to it?
That I don't know. I'd, I'd really have to go back and look. Certainly, we haven't done it recently. We may have done, uh, do you remember us? There, there might have been a, uh, three, four, I, I don't know. I, I don't know. Flip?
Mayor and Council, uh, at least in the recent past, we've just been doing the, the wholesale increase, just passing straight through. But I know, I'm gonna say, five or six years ago, we, we passed an increase, uh, to set up a capital project-type fund for that. But then with time, to again minimize those increases, that kind of got absorbed in those wholesale rate increases as well. But we can come up with some information on the history, but I know at least in the past few years, it's been strictly that pass-through.
Thank you. And this kind of is continuation, Flip touched on it. We did have a rate increase, but because wholesale rates kind of came in higher, the city actually absorbed some of that and did not pass some of the, the, the higher rates on to citizens. Uh, I think more than once, the city absorbed some of that.
In the past, we, that has happened. We've actually absorbed some. What we're trying to do now is as much as possible, just, just have those dollars flow through evenly. And it's gonna be interesting next year to see, and I don't know if we'll know by enough time for budget, to see how this, the, that extra sales tax, forty-four percent of it, according to a formula, is supposed to come back to us as, as this new sales tax that's supposed to equal the utility franchise tax. So we're gonna have to watch all that. But that's really affecting the general fund and not the electric fund. But, uh, yeah, there were, there are, there were some years back where the city actually ate the, the, but the, over a period of time, what that will do to your electric system, you won't have enough dollars to be able to maintain it. And that, that really, you, you can't run that too long.
Councilman Campbell.
Councilman Gallagher, you, you had indicated that, um, I think you- Councilman Gallagher, you, you had indicated that, um, I think your terminology was from Raleigh. Uh, are, are, are you indicating that, that they, they were legislated increases in our fees?
Exactly. They moved the fee from three percent currently to four percent. Um, and it's due to an embedded fee that was in there, um, some type of franchise?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ed. Franchise tax?
What was embedded before was a utility franchise fee, and the utility franchise fee was three point two-two percent. And that three point two-two percent was embedded in everyone's tax, except industries. Industries, well, no, excuse me, that charged against industries. All right. So, what the legislature did is did away with last year utility franchise tax. Instead, put another four cents on all retail, uh, customers, like my bill, which currently says three percent, well, and your bills will soon say seven. And that's across the state of North Carolina. It's just not Gastonia. This is statewide. So, whether you're a Duke or Rutherford or anything, it's the same thing. So, there's actually, if you notice, they took a, a tax that's three point two-two percent of wholesale and applied a four percent tax on retail. So, really, that should produce more dollars. Now, we are only to get forty-four percent of that in a formula back from the state. The additional dollars, which we calculate to be significant, will go to the state. So, just as Councilman Gallagher indicated, this was a state legislative action to switch the location of the tax, to hold cities harmless, and to, to do this tax in this way. It's very comp, it's complicated. Uh, but that's what, that's really what's going on.
Thank you. And I guess the point of my question again was that, or the solution, actually, was that it was a legislated act, uh, in Raleigh that raised these fees. Is that your understanding?
That is definitely correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Hearsaw.
Ed, hearing your explanation made me think. The city of Gastonia is, under their current plan, is getting forty-four percent back. Okay, is that of all residents within our city limit or just our customers? Because if it's all residents, we'd actually be getting some additional revenue, because we'd be getting it from Rutherford and Duke customers.
No, uh, cus, uh, customers.
Just customers. So, so Duke Energy would getting, be getting forty-four percent of that tax given back to them?
Well, actually, no, I don't know how that works with Duke, and, and I don't know how it works with Rutherford.
See who gets their revenue?
Mm-hmm.
Well, see where I think-
The state probably gets it, doesn't it?
That's right. I think that's really what's hap, I see what, what I think happens with Duke. Some of those folks, they are, they're not paying that utility franchise tax. So, they, they benefit, right? Paul, you think?
Basically, basically what it boils down to is, is Raleigh says they're cutting everybody's taxes, and they found another way to slip a fee in there, and they're actually getting more, because people that didn't even pay a tax or fee are now paying it.
Yeah.
So, when we hear from Raleigh that they've lowered our taxes, it's really not true at all.
We've really concentrated on the impact on the city. That's really, like, been our focus. Exactly how this works with the rural cooperatives and how this works with Duke, I, I'm not, I'm not sure. Whether, whether they're winners or losers through this, uh, we, we were just watching our dollars.
What, what the state seems to be doing is shifting the money to the municipalities. And, and it looks like they've reduced ta, fees or taxes or whatever you wanna call it, but they've shifted that to the responsibility of the municipalities.
Correct.
Which creates a challenge for all municipalities to come up with, with the additional revenue that's gonna, that's needed. Uh, but anyway, that's, it's a Raleigh thing. Uh, is there a motion to approve number two under item six of the regular agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, number three, Mr. Munn?
Number three is the adoption of the project ordinance for fiscal year twenty fourteen fifteen, Community Development Block Grant Program, and that is on page six eighteen, and that is for one million, three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number four, I mean, uh, number four under item six, uh, Mr. Munn?
Yeah, uh, item four, which is on page six dash twenty, is our capital project, which is the adoption of the project budget for fiscal year twenty fourteen fifteen for the capital projects budget. And the amount of that budget is four million, thirty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second here.
Any discussion? Uh, Councilman Hearsaw.
Ed, this is, this is the, is this part of what you were referring to previously when you were talking about, uh, capital projects and, and that sort of thing? But this is just, as far as budget, this is what anticipated revenue or expenses would be?
Uh, these are, these are actually for-
They can't see what we're seeing.
Yeah, these are actually for projects, uh, whether they're, you know, for instance, in, you know, the, the, we have capital projects in electric, which would be the substation, water and sewer lines, the, the road proj, all the capital projects. We also ha, and we have funds awaiting capital projects. For instance, water and sewer, we are, we are collecting funds and, and, and holding those funds in a capital program, and that's really where those dollars would go. Yes.
And, but these do not include any anticipated future funds that, that Mr. Sosby was referring to?
No, not these. No, the, uh, we, the, these, yeah, uh, th, these would not be included.
I, just, 'cause everybody can't see what we're looking at, so I just.
The system expansion fee is in, in this project ordinance, three hundred and twenty thousand is budgeted for that.
I apologize. Three hundred and twenty thousand, okay. All right, I stand corrected.
So, do we need to take a look at that number?
I, I don't think at this point in time. Yeah, go ahead, Flip, be, 'cause we're-
Mayor Protem, members of council, that, those are strictly the revenues that we could collect based on the current fee projections. Uh, there is, that again, as Mr. Munn explained earlier, is not, there's not an expenditure line for that. That, at the earliest, would be sometime next year with the water treatment plant, most likely. So, those are just revenues. If that revenue number decreases, that won't impact any of our operations at this point.
Water and sewer, we're actually collecting more than we're spending in, in, in our operations, and this, in a designed way in these years. So, we're building up that fund balance, 'cause we know that water plant's coming. So, what we're gonna do, and, and some other projects. So, we're, we're building that, those reserves, so it's not applied to a capital project, but it is the revenue. Thank you, thank you.
There are motion to approve number four under item six.
Motion here, madam.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, that gets us through item number six. Item number seven, uh, in the agenda, Recreation Advisory Commission Report, uh, Councilman Curlin.
Thank you, madam mayor, Protem. Uh, the Recreation Advisory Commission met on Tuesday, May the thirteenth, at five thirty P.M., and, uh, all the items that I'm gonna discuss with you briefly are just, uh, for your information, but for the record and for the audience. So, the first item was an update on the payment and lieu, uh, policy, and, uh, the recreation staff apprised the commission at that time, uh, of the proceedings that had been ongoing with the planning commission, and their four-to-two vote to repeal the payment and lieu policy. And as you're aware, the Recreation Advisory Commission had voted unanimously to maintain that, uh, that payment and lieu policy. So, uh, some of the things that were discussed at this time, again, to reiterate the, uh, the Recreation Advisory Commission's position on this was, um, the, the value of having a quality park system and how it actually attracts development, the younger generation of home buyers looking to purchase homes with quality recreation and open space nearby. Uh, the fact that, uh, at this time, the payment and lieu fee has not been a deterrent to development, that new home buyers seem to prefer smaller yard space and more public space opportunities, and that maintenance was defined as regular and ongoing upkeep of property and facilities, and that reconstruction or rehab of parks and facilities and replacement of amenities that occurred at the end of a useful lifespan, which means every ten to fifty years, was not considered maintenance. And this was referring to the Ashbrook Tennis Court's, uh, issue, so. Um, projects utilizing payment and lieu funds should be approved by city council through the budget amendment process, and this was all, uh, basically, uh, discussed in this particular agenda, item number one. Uh, item number two was just a, uh, a, uh, park project update, and this included some issues to include the Optimus Park Phase Two and the tennis court projects, uh, which will include both Ferguson Phillips as well as Ashbrook. And these will be, uh, again, early to May, uh, to mid-June. The Sims Park Scoreboard, which, uh, I wasn't out to the game, but is it up?
Yep, it's up.
It's up. Okay, good. So, that's, that's that. Check it off. Um, and the Irwin Pool Pump Room Structural Project, um, which is in the process of being rebid, uh, as they had no bidders at the first offering. Uh, two bidders have placed bids on the second offering, and it remains hopeful the work will be completed by mid-June, June, so that no delays in opening the pool will occur this summer. The third item, which is a continued review of portions of the master plan, and, and this one was focusing on community centers, and, uh, I'll just run down this list just so you get a, an idea of the ongoing needs of the, uh, the department and the, the centers. The first one being Irwin Center, uh, needs and potential projects. This include, uh, gym floor replacement, and, uh, they hope, uh, that this will be in the preliminary fiscal, fiscal year fifteen budget. Um, sidewalks, curb, and guttering along Pryor and Norman Streets from the parking areas to the center entrance, um, because the center participants, um, have to walk in the street to get to the, the center. Um, and Engineering Department is coming up with cost estimates for this project. Um, adding playground equipment and providing more ADA-compliant surface areas, uplifting the outdoor basketball court area, ball field improvements, possible conversion of tennis courts, and a pool area to spray grounds, since these tennis courts are really not being utilized anymore. The Phillips Center needs and potential projects include, uh, the gym floor replacement, tennis court reconstruction, which is in the current budget, replacing the weight room equipment, adding playground equipment, again, with a more ADA-compliant surface area, ball field lighting, fencing improvements, walking track improvements, parking improvements, sidewalk on Echo Lane from Hudson to the center entrance, and adding a large picnic shelter. Of course, these are all, you know, um, part of this master plan. These are not part of any particular, um, budget at this time, but just to give you an indication of what our needs are. Bradley Center also has, uh, the need to construct additional storage in an activity room on the south side of the gym, provide enhancements to the disc golf course, add playground equipment, and again, more compliant, uh, ADA surfaces, ball field lighting and fencing improvements, sidewalk from Medina to the center entrance, as well as picnic shelter improvements. Um, at T. Jeffers, they also need additional, um, storage and activity room space on the south side of the gym, uh, converting four tennis courts to outdoor basketball and multi-use courts, and converting four tennis courts to a green open space. Uh, they would also like to add additional playground equipment, again, with the ADA-compliant surface areas, ball field lighting, fencing improvements. As you can see, a lot of these are the same at each of these centers, 'cause they were all built basically on the same model and in very similar time periods, as well as, um, a sidewalk from Merle School Road to the center entrance and picnic shelter improvements. So, this is an ongoing, uh, project of the RAC right now, is to, to review each parts of the master plan, uh, which was originally, uh, documented back in, what Chuck, was it two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, or two thousand and five, two thousand and six? Two thousand and five, two thousand and six. So, you know, time passes, and, you know, we just need to update these things, which is what the commission is in the process of doing. Open discussion ensued. Uh, Mr. Barkley was there to raise some questions. I don't need to go into detail on that, but, um, staff will be, you know, working with him on some of his concerns. And, uh, one, one important, um, topic, uh, ensued, and that was with reference to a, a discussion about the history of these community centers, um, why they were named, um, you know, for the individuals, uh, that, um, you know, those names, uh, are on those facilities. And it was suggested that maybe we could do a, a little better job of providing some kind of a plaque at each of these facilities to, um, give credit to those individuals whose names, uh, you know, adorn those facilities. And it's good, I think, for the, the kids and the other participants of those facilities to, to get a sense of history of, of who these people were. They were city leaders. And that, um, you know, there should be something, again, like we have out at Sims Park, um, you know, for, uh, uh, you know, for Buddy Lewis and folks like that, that we should also have somewhere at these, uh, park facilities. So, that's basically the end of my, uh, report. And any questions?
Yes, doctor. Um, you, you touched on something, Dave, that I think is, is very important, and, and I just wanna get a better sense. Do you have a longer-term list of what needs, what our needs are going to be? And I'm not talking maintenance, but more or less, it's worn out, we need to replace it as far as a number of facilities, because it seems, and I got from, you know, both our discussion and, and what you did here, that a lot of the stuff was built at the same time, and it's, there, it seems to be, um, entering its last phases of usefulness in its life.
Well, I think Chuck can answer that better, but I, I think if the, if there were roofs that needed to be replaced, and AC systems that need to be replaced, maybe, you know, some of that comes to the operating budget, but can you elaborate on that a little bit better?
Yes, sir, Dr. Curlin, uh, madam mayor, Protem, members of council. Um, we're presently doing an assessment on some of those things, like fencing and ball field lighting. Uh, we have things out there that are from the nineteen, uh, early nineteen seventies, uh, latest, uh, latest that were put in in, uh, nineteen eighty-four, uh, sort of lighting systems. You get twenty-five to thirty years is usually the, the lifespan of, of those systems. So, but we are in the process of, of doing that, as well as our, our facilities now. Our heat, heating and air, those kind of things are ongoing maintenance issues. Uh, we, we've had a couple, and we replace those through our normal budgeting unless we get hit with a couple in the same year. And, and, uh, the city manager and the finance folks usually do a real good job of finding, that's an emergency situation, so we do take care of those. But, uh, our master plan does call for, we, we do have some of that spelled out in our master plan. Our update will give us some more concrete numbers that we plan to bring back to you that, that, that will give you, uh, more of those needs and what those needs are and the numbers that fit along with those, with those needs.
Thank you. Thank you, doctor.
Mm-hmm.
Councilman Gallagher.
Chuck, one question. I was recently down at Martha Rivers and went to the playground equipment and stuff, and a lot of it needs to be refurbished somewhat, sanded or whatever. Um, it just, you know, just by going around the area itself and just inspecting different parts of, you know, the park area where the kids play, um, is, is there anything in project or anything on schedule for something to be done there?
You're talking about the playground at Martha Rivers?
Right.
Okay. Um, it's, it, it seems like it was just yesterday when we did it, but we, we renovated it at the ten-year anniversary, but last year, I guess it's been a year and a half, eighteen months now, since we did a sand and seal on it. Uh, originally, uh, it was set up for the volunteers who built it to come back every year and do volunteer sand and seal. Well, you know, they expended a lot of effort and really did a wonderful job with the facility, but that aspect of it has not come back. But they have given us funds to, to do, uh, some of those maintenance uh, issues and the sand and seal. But, like I said, I was going, when you were saying it, I was going through my mind when we, when we did it, but it's actually been eighteen months. So, it's, it's time to, to do that sand and seal again. Um, we, we keep up with anything that's safety as, you know, as, as quickly as possible. There are, there are things that, they're, they're, they're worn from use and not abuse. I will tell you, that, that, that facility has been utilized, uh, more than, more than anything I could have ever imagined, uh, when we were planning that facility.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there are a ton of the kids running around that place.
But we'll, we'll go down and look at it, and, uh, I know we can't get it done, and what we have left, uh, with, with, uh, thirty days left in this year's budget. But next year's budget, we should have some funding to go ahead and, and get that, uh, sand and seal taken care of.
Thank you, sir.
City manager, did you have your hand up, and then I'll-
Yes, sir. Uh, just a few things I wanted to add to what, uh, the recreation report indicated. We, both of the floors, uh, at, at Phillips and Irwin, we tentatively have in the budget. So, you know, as long as the dollars work out with our other projects, we, we should be able to tackle those. The other project, the project, the swimming pool at, at Ir, at Irwin, I wanna mention that that's top priority. We wanna make sure that thing gets done. That's been a very complicated and tough problem out there. And we're working on that, because we wanna make darn sure that that pool opens. Right, Chuck?
Gets tougher every day. It got more complicated today.
Uh, yeah, it is, yeah. There, there is a level of complexity of what, that thing in terms of how it's all- of how it's all falling apart, right?
How it, how it is doing that structurally, but also how we found some issues from, of course, here again, it seems like it was yesterday, but it was about fifteen years ago when we renovated it, but some of the, some of the skimmer baskets were encased, we've had leaks, small leaks, since, since really when we, when we found them the first year, but we've really had some leaks here the last couple of years and seems like the plastic skimmers were encased in concrete and once a small leak kind of undermined some of that and through the help of our water department, we've, we've located two now and we think there's at least one more, so we do have a contractor that's supposed to be on site in, in, by the end of next week and that project, by the end of the summer, by the end of the summer, we're definitely going to be swimming there, but it seems like something every day pushes us back another week.
But it's, it's a matter of, of highest priority because you, certainly you're going into the swimming season and this thing has become a bigger and bigger problem as we've gotten into it and that actually will, is, is more, more important than a lot of the other projects we're working on, so we're trying to get that done, just wanted to let you know.
Councilman Kimball.
On, on some of these, Councilman Gallagher had indicated we have some, it looks like some paint might be peeling or some other issues like that, have, have you approached our sheriff at all to see if we could get their labor assistance team out there utilizing inmates? Some of this, I know some of the work is, you, you need to be technologically proficient as far as like the, the pool maintenance and things like that, but I would think that maybe some of the other things as far as groundskeeping and, and sanding and sealing, not only would lessen the burden on our city staff, but would also, could give the folks that are doing that time a meaningful outlet for some of their time.
We will definitely pursue that, we have utilized those, those folks, especially in areas like Sims Park where you, where you really don't, you can, you can actually close it down for the public and you don't have a whole lot of contact with, with, with the kids, both the sheriff and also the corrections department folks, we, we have dealt with them before too. It's, 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 it's a little bit touchy situation when it is, when the park is open and there are kids and those kind of things available. We, we're kind of a little bit leery of it and, and those folks are as well, but I think there's some mechanisms and some conversations that we can have that will definitely find something that will fit what they can do and what will work for, for both of us.
Yeah, I, I think it could be meaningful as, as well as cost effective on both ends and, and thank you very much.
Councilman Pierceall.
Just one quick thing, it was brought up recently at a community watch meeting at the Irwin Center. They, they feel a little underwhelmed by the sign that's out there denoting that park and they had a complaint that flowers or something will be planted at the beginning of the year, but no one really maintains them and within a week or two they're all dead and never get replaced, so when you get into about the park season, that corner right there at Irwin Center that sits up above the soccer field always looks very sad is the word they use and they sit in comparison to some of the other parks with, with better signage and, and better presentation as you approach the park, so they, they asked if I could mention that and I was going to send it an email to Ed, but since we're talking about parks, I reckon I'll go ahead and bring it up.
I'd, I'd like to address that, Councilman Pierceall, if I may, I'll tell you, I'm not satisfied with that sign as well, even though it, it, it says what you wanted to say and our sign shop did it, it was, it was a hurried, a hurried job to, to do that and I'm actually, I actually consider that a temporary sign, that's not, that's not a, a permanent sign and we will be working to, it may wind up being out of the same materials, but I will tell you, we have some out of the same materials almost all of our other facilities, except our newer facilities where we've gone to the, you know, to the, to the brick and rounded wood, even the ones that are made by our sign shop, we did a better job at our other facilities and we'll definitely, definitely look at that and plantings and taking care of business. I, I was very disappointed in it myself.
I, I appreciate that and I'll definitely let them know that, thank you.
Councilman Gallagher.
Chuck, when does the pool at Lineburger open up?
We open up Memorial Day weekend.
I'm just throw this out there, but with the kids over at Irwin Center, you know, they have a pool there and it's broken, is there any way we can, like on a Saturday or a Sunday, be able to get them over, I don't want to overwhelm the Lineburger pool, but same token, I want them to, to have some, some type of availability to some outlet, some recreation to cool off. Is there something we can do on it?
I would be at a loss, at a, at a loss for something like that as far as who, how, logistics, those kind of things. I, I'll tell you, there's something that, there's something that we do with the center.
Yeah, the same thing is with swimming and water and stuff, that is a risk.
But, but there is something we do with our community centers that I think may, you know, our, our staff at, at the center realizes and knows the kids that participate in our programs that utilize our pool, you know, there may be some opportunity and I think once school is out, or, or, let's just say it's two or three weeks before the, before the Irwin Pool is fixed, that we could utilize our, you know, our city van or something to transport some of those kids over there to the pool at a, and especially during the week where we can, we will not be, first weekend, first two weekends, we've been overwhelmed, we've been really overwhelmed.
I said, I really don't want to overwhelm the pool that's here.
And if that's acceptable, I, I will pursue that with our, with our staff and that way we, we will, our staff will know who the regulars are, who are missing the pool that are, that are being there because they're actually going to be in that community center every day anyway.
If you can do that Chuck, that would be excellent.
I think it's a great idea, yeah.
We don't have to vote on anything that, that you, this was all for information only.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Great report, thank you, good discussion. Item number eight, transportation committee report and the committee met last night, so we don't have any written reports in our agenda, so if Councilman Kimball will give us an update, that'd be great.
Thank you, madam. Actually, we met up until about eight-thirty or so last night, we had a number of items on the agenda, but also we had a lot of meaningful input from the community on several items. I want to thank staff for getting, really in the eleventh hour, getting a, a report to me, but actually what I'd like to do, madam, with your approval and that of the board, we don't have any of our particular display items and some other, really some factual data that really should be reported to the, to the council and the public, so what I would like to do, given the lateness of the hour, is I would like to move that to the next meeting.
That would be fine.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will continue that on the next council meeting. Very next one?
That is correct and, and, and just to also give you an update, during that period, the staff is going to be continuing some fact finding on a number of issues that came up during our, our transportation meeting. They may not be completed with that at that time, but they will be able to give meaningful updates on kind of where we're going and also the feasibility of several items and lastly, some reports, I think in particular, there may be one from the police department on a couple of traffic issues that we should have reports by then.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Down to item number nine, this is the request to rescind action.
What is nine A?
Pardon me?
Do you have a nine A?
Okay, but that comes after item nine?
Yeah.
That'll come after item nine. Mr. Smith, Mayor Bridgeman has requested to be called up with this item, would you go ahead and, and see if you can get him on the line? And this is a request to rescind action appointing members to the Gastonia ABC Board. Presentation by Councilman McEntire.
Mayor, this is Ash Smith, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I sure can, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
All right, I'm sorry, just sneezed, okay, go ahead.
All right.
All right.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, uh, Mayor Bridgeman, Councilman McEntire is just beginning his presentation.
Okay, go right ahead.
Mayor, I mean, Councilman McEntire.
Thank you. In accordance with notice given in the call or agenda of this meeting, I move to rescind the action of May twentieth, two thousand fourteen that appointed two members to the Gastonia ABC Board.
Wait one second, that?
Any discussion?
Well, I, I need, I think you're supposed to call on me to, to give the rationale first.
Okay, okay, that'd be fine, we can do that.
At the May twentieth, two thousand fourteen meeting, a procedural error occurred during this process. The motion made by Councilman Gallagher seconded and subsequently passed to appoint Michael Dean and Melvin Burris to Gastonia ABC Board should have been ruled out of order. The proper procedure was for the chair, the mayor, to declare the floor open for nominations. Each council member desiring to make a nomination would have been recognized to make a nomination. No seconds are needed for nominations in this manner. After all council members indicate that there are no more nominations, the chair may either declare the nominations to be closed or ask for a motion to close the nominations in the second. Then a vote is taken on each nominee listed in alphabetical order. Robert's Rules of Order suggests that a member should not offer more than one nomination to a position if there are several seats with the same office, such as nominees to a board or committee unless, until all other members have had the opportunity to make nominations. However, if a member does not make more nominations, as was the case with Councilman Gallagher's motion, before others have had their chance, his additional nominations are not out of order unless someone ejects to his actions, which I did, but my ejection was not recognized and I was not allowed to make my nomination. In any event, closing nominations is out of order when anyone remains wishing to nominate and even when properly closed by two-thirds vote after no one wishes to make additional nominations, a majority vote is all it takes to reopen nominations. Suppressing a nomination, suppressing nominations is not only out of order as long as anyone wants to add to the list, but it also wastes a lot of time and is a futile strategy. The motion by Councilman Gallagher was out of order, should be rescinded and a new nomination process as described taken for the two positions on the Gastonia ABC Board. The action making the appointments of Michael Dean and Melvin Burris can be rescinded as the effective date of their appointments is July first, two thousand fourteen and has not yet occurred. Further, this same process for nominations as I have described was implemented and used last year at the June fourth, two thousand thirteen meeting when action was taken on nominations with the Gastonia ABC Board and establishes a precedent. The minutes from the June fourth, two thousand thirteen meeting confirmed that this was a process for nominations I have outlined. Want to pass out these, several people have, which is the minutes from last year, I think. And that's the minute showing where we did do that proper procedure. I respectfully ask that you vote in favor of the motion to rescind the action of May twentieth, two thousand fourteen appointed two members to Gastonia ABC Board and do we have another vote on the two appointments to the Gastonia ABC Board following accepted, accepted practice, custom and precedence. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, right?
Yes.
There's a second on the floor, okay, any discussion? Councilman Gallagher.
Council McEntire, by rescinding this vote, does that mean we intend on voting for the ABC appointments tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Councilman Pierceall.
We're, we are just rescinding these votes to do the nomination process correctly and the vote correctly, just so everything's above board. I mean, it's not that we necessarily did anything illegal, we just want to follow proper procedure and make sure everybody's giving their, their sake, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Account, I mean, attorney, is that right?
Would you like to meet, for me to respond?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted kind of for the public to know that we didn't do anything illegal, we just didn't follow proper procedure.
Yes, sir, chapter two of the code does set forth the procedure for appointments. It states that unless council chooses to do otherwise, the procedures to open the floor, council makes nominations, council discusses the qualifications of the nominations, the mayor declares the nominations closed and then calls the names alphabetically. If there's only one appointment to be made, the person getting the greatest number of votes would be appointed. If there are two slots to be appointed, which is the case here, each council member then has as many votes as there are slots, okay? And the code goes on to say that each council member must cast all of his votes and he can't cast his votes for the same person, so you have to vote for different people, you can't stack your vote, okay? Now, to answer your question, Councilman Pierceall, no, I don't think you did anything illegal because we have a section of the code that says no failure to act in Robert's rules, in, in invalidation of Robert's rules or invalidates your actions, okay? And the beginning of the section about appointments says unless otherwise agreed by council. So, as you know, as a routine matter, when you have a routine and a non-controversial appointment, there's, there's usually just one nominee. When you get to that point on the agenda, the mayor says, there's an appointment, do I hear a motion, someone makes a motion, it's second, the mayor says, there's a motion and a second, or is there any further discussion? If you look back at the minutes of almost all of the appointments, usually there's not and then the mayor calls for the vote and that one nominee is approved for that position, okay? So I don't think that those votes are invalid, you know, now, as was the case at the last council meeting, this vote apparently was not routine and is controversial, so it would have been the better course of action to follow the procedure that Councilman McEntire described in two dot sixty-two. I'm responsible for helping you with parliamentary procedure, so I apologize for not making sure that we were on point about that section of the code. Where does that take us in regard to the matter that's before you tonight? As, as Councilman McEntire has said, if the vote, if the motion is approved that he has made, then when you get to item ten on your agenda, you will do the ABC appointments over again using the procedure that he's described. If you turn down this motion, then the appointments of May twentieth will stand. And that is a very long answer, Councilman Pierceall, but...
It's just fine.
I wanted to make sure that I got all that out on the record about the parliamentary procedure involved. Mr. Mayor, did you hear all of that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Are, is there any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion to rescind the ABC appointed members from the May twentieth meeting, raise your right hand.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, um, how do...
I can't hear that, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, since you can't see, I will tell you that everybody raised their hand in favor of the motion, so...
To rescind?
To rescind, so it, it has passed, but would you like to have your vote noted for the record?
I vote also, you may, excuse me, you had to rescind how many votes, all of them?
All of them were in favor of the motion to rescind, Mr. Mayor, so how would you like...
I would go along with that too.
All right. All right, Mr. Mayor, would you like us to keep you on the line so that you can participate in the appointments for the ABC Board, the other appointments later?
Yes, thank you.
So, just a point of order, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, if you wanted to go ahead and do that so that the mayor can then get off the phone, that would be at your discretion and then we can come back to nine A, which is the Parks and Rec discussion.
What are the wishes of the council?
Could we, but could we ask the mayor if he would like, I, I don't know whether he's seen item nine A and would we want to, I believe it would be in the best interest of fundamental fairness to ask the mayor if he would like to stay online for nine A as well, because again, I don't know, has anybody spoken to him about this being on the agenda?
I did.
No, I do not know what nine A is.
I believe that we, Regina may have sent something to you.
Yeah, I don't know if the mayor's had a chance to open that email, but there's an addendum item to the agenda, Mr. Mayor, with regard to a discussion about the Parks and Rec fee, so that's what nine A is. So would you like to go ahead and do that now, Mr. Mayor? So would you like to go ahead and do that now, Mr. Mayor, or would you like for us to go ahead and do the vote on the ABC appointment so that you can get off the phone?
Well, I, I don't mind being on, certainly on the phone with you, but I, I would like to continue with 9A if, if, if it's up to me, and let's get it resolved, yes.
Okay, we will continue with 9A, which is the discussion about the recreation fee in lieu.
No, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I don't know.
You want to go to item 10?
Thinking about nine, item nine, and not 9A, if I said 9A, I didn't mean to. I don't know anything about the Parks Recreation Fee. I'll be glad to stay on the phone for that, but I'm referring to the request to rescind action appointing the members to the ABC Board, and it was, undoubtedly, all of us unanimous to rescind. I would, I would request, Madam Chair, that it, we go to item 10 and go back to 9A, which I didn't know anything about.
Ah, okay, that is the consensus of the council to go to item 10 now, and then come back to item 9A after we have completed item 10?
Please.
Is that okay? Yeah, that, that is the consensus in, in what the council wants to do. So we are going to go to item number 10, citizen committee appointment.
And, and Madam Mayor Pretin, the ABC appointment is not listed on the exhibit 10-1, but it should be the first appointment, because alphabetically, that's always the way you've done it, and so the floor would be open for nominations, and this time we don't need seconds, and you just recognize members of the council in order that they raise their hand, and you recognize them for nominations.
Okay, the floor is now open for nominations for the, by the council, for the ABC Board. Councilman, we'll start on this end. Councilman Kimball.
Thank you, Madam. I would like to nominate Mr. Thomas Brown, resident of Gastonia. I have his resumes here. He's a current director of operations for a fifty, fifty-five million dollar business of over 400 associates, and also has taught at the University of North Carolina Charlotte as director of the Industrial Solutions Laboratory, and I have copies of the resume for you all.
Okay, if you'll pass that...
Thank you.
Along, okay. Are there any other nominations? Councilman Gallagher.
I would like to nominate Michael Dean, as I did last time, and do you all have a copy of his resume at your seat?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations from the floor?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chuck Lieford, I discussed him last time. He's a former Assistant Chief of the Gastonia Police Department. He was the ALLE agent when Mr. Larry Beck first came to Gastonia, and he's also an attorney now, a practicing attorney, and I just think he would make an excellent contribution to the ABC. He's already familiar with, with the ABC laws, and it, and it would be really good to have an attorney on there, we, I don't think we've ever had one, which would be an excellent source of advice.
How do you spell his last name?
L-I-F-F-O-R-D.
Two Fs, okay. L-I-F-F-O-R-D.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Are there any other nominations from the floor?
I, I have one.
Councilman Pierceall?
I'd like to nominate a lady for this position, Myra McGill.
Myra McGill?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent.
Is that two Ls?
It is.
Okay, all right.
M little C, big G-I-L-L.
Okay, all right. Are there any other nominations? Councilman Gallagher.
I'd like to nominate Melvin Burris. He's currently on the ABC Board, and he said that he would like to redo it. And with Michael Dean, I'm, Michael, I appreciate you coming back all the way from vacation from the beach to come here. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I don't know that you can nominate two. I don't think any council member can nominate two. I don't think so.
If everybody's made a nomination.
If, if everybody's made a nomination, or if the ones who have not made a nomination do not make a nomination, then second nominations are in order, but only two nominations since there are only two seats.
Okay. So every council person could make two nominations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any other nominations from the floor?
I'll nominate Melvin Burris.
Well, okay.
To put him back in, back in, put him back in play, you know?
Okay.
All right. I have, are there any other nominations from the council? Okay, I have one, two, three, four, five names, is that right, Mr. Seale?
That's what I have, Madam Clerk, is that right?
Okay. And if we do this alphabetically, okay, Tom Brown would be voted on first, is that right? Melvin Burris would be voted on second. Michael Dean would be voted on third. Chuck Lieford would be voted on fourth, and Myra McGill, is that right, would be voted on fifth. Is that right, Madam Clerk? Okay, all right.
Madam Mayor, let's ask one more time if there are any other nominations. Well, the, the mayor is, is, the mayor could ask for someone to nominate someone if he liked. Mr. Mayor, would you like to ask anyone to nominate someone for you?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, I, the next question I think would be, are there any other nominations? And if there's not, you can declare the nominations closed.
Okay, all right. Are there any other nominations for the ABC Board? Okay, there are none. So I declare the nomination for ABC Board closed, okay? We will vote alphabetically, every, just to clarify, every council person has two votes.
Correct.
All right.
You must cast both votes, and you can only vote for a nominee one time, all right? And, and Mayor, you're going to have to speak up when we get to the name that you want to vote for, okay?
Never had a problem with that, okay?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Curlin.
Yes, may I ask some questions before we vote?
Yes, because we just closed the nomination.
Right, so now we can talk about these people, whether they're in the room or not.
That's right.
Okay? So...
Let's take them individually, as they come up alphabetically, if that works, okay?
Sure.
Let's...
Let me, let me preface my, you know, remarks by just saying that obviously, I think our goal here is to provide a board that is going to help the ABC system to succeed, and I'm not saying anything you don't know, but also that we can bring various individuals of various backgrounds, but all that can contribute to that board in some way. So, that being said, I want to go back and be refreshed, whether it be by Mr. Kimball or staff, and I want to know the names of the other board members that are currently serving on the ABC Board.
Okay.
So, we have, Mr. Summer?
That's correct. We have Mr. Wade White and Mr. John Howard, and currently, obviously, Mr. Burris is, is up for reappointment at this time.
And Mr. Novance is going off.
That is correct.
Mr. Novance is going off, Mr. Wade White, who served now one term, Mr. Summer, who served several terms, and Mr. Burris has completed one full term, is that correct? Okay. So there's a total of six, excuse me, five.
Five.
Five, five on the board.
That's correct.
Five on the board. Okay. I'm not familiar with Mr. White, what's his background?
We, we voted him in last year, sir.
Does anybody know Mr. White, to know what his background is?
I think he's retired from Duke Power years ago, he was an electrical instructor at Gaston Technical Institute, he's, lives on Gardner Park Drive, and...
He was your nomination, wasn't he?
No, he was Walz.
Oh, he was Walz.
That's correct. He's also does a lot in the area of information technology, and he's actually been, in my opinion, an asset to the board as we move forward with, as, as Mr. Dean indicated, a lot of automation and computer technology and hardware within not only our system, but the interface in the many systems within the, the overall ABC, and also to provide our customers not only with an ease of making their purchases, be it with a debit, be it with a credit, but also of what we've seen in the newspaper, unfortunately, there have been times with a number of retailers where there have been breaches of security. And Mr. White has been, in my, again, in my opinion, extremely in the forefront of ensuring that we have a top-quality system, both now and as we integrate into the future.
Okay. Mr. Summer, I know he has a background in general contracting or construction, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Mr. Burris, we know who Mr. Burris is, correct?
He works in the fire department.
Exactly, okay. So, so Mr. Brown was your nominee?
That is correct.
And his background is, I mean, we have a resume here, but could you help summarize it for the audience?
He, he manages daily operations for a fifty-five million dollar business comprised of 400 associates and five manufacturing facilities. They actually make a lot of the, the bottles that we all drink out of with our soft drinks and juices. He directs and coordinates a capital expense plan of over $6 million, and he has delivered cost-saving projects that delivered $7.4 million in annual savings. Additionally, he worked at the University of North Carolina Charlotte as the director of the Industrial Solutions Laboratory, and I don't want to be redundant in going through what he's accomplished there, but in particular, very strong in the area of marketing to the end user, and he developed the first marketing catalog to, for industrial sponsors and design expos. He's had another, a number of other positions in both manufacturing, technology, but also I'd like to bring to the board's attention his particular areas of education and community leadership. He has a master's of science degree in manufacturing systems engineering from Lehigh University, a bachelor of science degree in industrial engineering technology from Clemson, and he has a continuing education program certificate. Additionally, his community leadership background includes being a member of the Citizens Advisory Board for the City of Gastonia, he was an advisory board member for the City of Gastonia 2020 Plan, an advisory board member for the South Carolina Advanced Technology Education Center for Excellence, a director of board, a director of board for the Catawba Technical Education Consortium, board of directors for the Rock Hill Chamber of Commerce, and lastly, his a deacon and a chairman of the Finance Committee for the First Presbyterian Church here in Gastonia. I would entertain any other questions on Mr. Brown.
Any of these, any questions regarding Mr. Brown?
Mr. Curlin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
Yes, sir, I, I'm just curious to know, I don't know the gentleman, he sounds wonderful. I was just curious to know, if I may ask, and, and all that sounds so good, how, how long has Councilman Curlin, uh, Kimball known this gentleman personally?
Oh, probably about six or seven years, sir.
Six or seven years?
Yes, that's...
Got a lot on him, that boy. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, his, his address indicates he lives on Independence Way.
That's correct.
That sounds like a familiar address.
That is correct. That is correct.
They're, they're neighbors.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right, yeah, so, I know it will, okay, go ahead.
You go to the mayor's church?
Any other discussion? Okay. Are we ready to vote for Mr., I mean, on Mr. Brown, is the number, I mean, that's number one?
No, no, I'd like to finish this, this resume vetting process, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor Pretin. So I thought we'd get through all those first so that we can really get as much background and understanding, and then we could just take our vote.
Are, are we done on, on Thomas Brown?
Pardon me?
Are, we're done on Thomas Brown, or?
No more questions?
Okay.
No more questions on Thomas Brown.
Thank you.
Now, do you want to go to Marvin, Melvin Burris as number two?
If, if someone wants to either speak on his behalf, or if we don't have a resume, is that correct? Okay, so...
Just like to say that, one, he's on, he's on the board, he's been there, I guess, three years, and he's also one of our fire inspectors, and he's done admirable job, and he's moved up in rank and class, so one thing I could say on Mr. Burris's behalf.
I have a question on Mr. Burris. How long has he been with the fire department? Do we know?
Twenty-seven or twenty-eight years.
Pardon me?
Twenty-seven or twenty-eight years.
Okay, twenty-seven or twenty-eight years, okay, all right. Has that all been in Gastonia? Chief? Thank you. Any other comments or questions about Mr. Burris? Okay. Moving down the line, just as, as discussion, Michael Dean, Councilman Gallagher.
Michael Dean, is a graduate from Ashley High School of Gastonia, he has his master of arts from Appalachian State, he graduated cum laude from App, he has his associate's degree from Gaston College, and he has his master's in business administration. He currently runs his own corporation, Rapid Cash Refund, he knows, he has 24 employees, so he knows a lot about what it takes for workman's comp, taxes, all that goes on with running a business itself. He's run, he's run this business since 1993 by himself. Prior to that, he was working at Carolina Freight, he started there in '76, went to '92. The gentleman has longevity, as he stated to us before, he was on the ABC Board for 20 years. We took him off last year, even though he really wanted to stay on, he came off, and he's asking to be put back on. And I've been contacted by several members of the board themselves within the ABC Board, and they have encouraged that he come back because he does have the 20 years of experience, which gives him perspective on items that come up before the council, well, before the ABC Board. Things such as, you know, let's try this, oh, you really don't want to try that, we tried that about five years ago, it really didn't pan out, and this is why. He gives good insight, and this is what the board members are telling me, similar to what I said last time, what Ed Munn does with us a lot of times up here on the council. He gives us insight on what we need to know about certain issues before we vote, and I find it very helpful, and since the ABC Board has, you know, Wade White, who's been on air one term, Melvin Burris, he's been on air, I guess, one term also, and John Howard's been on air one term, this man would give the necessary experience and expertise that he has in this field, and he really wants to volunteer. Those are all positives in my book. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions concerning Michael Dean? Okay, let's go to the next one, Chuck Lieford?
Yes, he's, of course, moved up to the Gastonia Police Department, with the bottom ranks all the way up, to Assistant Chief, so that's pretty self-explanatory there, serving many positions. In particular, he was the LE agent when Larry Beck came to the ABC Board to become director, and so he's very familiar with the ABC laws. Next, he, he entered into law school while he was still in the police department, and when he retired, he finished law school, taking his bar, and he's in private, private practice, and it's obvious that it would really be nice to have an attorney on that board, in my personal opinion, to advise the board on legal issues, and he's very familiar with the, with the laws on the, the liquor laws. So I just think he was an excellent choice, and it would be an excellent choice, and he has expressed a strong interest in serving. Appreciate any support for him.
Any questions or any other comments on Chuck Lieford? Councilman Kimball?
I may need to ask Chief Conley, how many years did Assistant Chief Lieford serve on the PD, sir?
Twenty-nine years.
And his, I'm sorry, his rank was, what was his rank when he retired?
Retired as Assistant Chief.
And what rank is that, sir? That would be in comparison to your position?
Number two.
Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, any other comments? Okay. Mara McGill?
I don't have a resume for Ms. McGill, but I will say that she is a product of Gastonia, having gone to school here. She owned her own company, Paradigm Consulting, which was a consulting and kind of mentoring firm for minority businesses starting out. She also was one of the leaders at Gaston Together. She's responsible for doing several health fairs and educational programs. And she's currently working, I believe it's with the Department of Social Services, something that the LE, or the ABC Board does now, something with
[phone ringing]
Children with Discipline Problems. Something that the ABC Board contributes to as well. That's how she's familiar with it. She expressed an interest in [phone ringing] Board-dominated by testosterone for all these years.
Reached the cell phone of John Bridge.
One female that can hold her.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I'll wait till you're.
I'm done.
Okay, shall I try to get him?
Yes, please.
Councilman Pierceall, is she affiliated at all with partners?
He reached the cell phone.
With, with partners? They deal a lot with people in attempting recovery or in recovery from alcohol-related issues?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
There's not a redial button on here, is there?
Hello?
Hey, we lost you, so I apologize.
I was calling you back, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
All right. I think we're through, Madam Mayor, so now the procedure would be.
Does he have any questions?
Do you have any questions, Mr. Mayor?
I did not miss, I think, anything. It was just about 30 seconds or so, it just dropped like off the face of the earth and came back. So, no, I don't, I know all the folks involved, and we'd be lucky to have all of them, but I mean, well, I don't know Mr. Brown, but I know certainly Chuck and Mara, and we would be lucky, and we can have them, I hope, they'll always want to serve, but, no, I don't have any questions, go right ahead.
Okay.
You recall each name alphabetically.
Tom Brown. Three votes for Tom Brown. Melvin Burris.
Ah.
There's three votes for Melvin Burris, okay? Michael Dean.
Ah.
There's four votes for Michael Dean. Chuck Lifer. There's three votes for Chuck Lifer.
Let's count again. Raise, would you ask me?
One, two.
Okay, is that it?
One, two, uh-huh.
Does that count, two or three then? Pardon me, does that count, two or three? Did you raise your hand?
I didn't.
No, no. And a mayor, so what?
One, two, three.
Oh, you raised your hand.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to clarify, that's all.
Okay, I'm sorry, Chuck Lifer has three votes.
The mayor, did he vote?
Did you vote for Chuck Lifer, Mr. Mayor?
He already voted for Burris and Dean.
No, sir.
He already voted for Burris and Dean, okay, we're good.
I already voted my two, I don't have two, do I?
Right.
Mara McGill, oh, I'm sorry, Mara McGill. One vote, two votes.
Two votes.
Two votes. Okay?
All right.
Mr. Smith, what do we have?
Mr. Dean has been elected. Now we continue to vote between Mr. Burris, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Lifer until someone is elected.
Okay, okay.
How many, how many votes total were there?
Yeah, I only got 15.
Did everyone?
I think Walter voted for three.
Oh, Walter voted for three.
Okay.
Oh, you voted for three?
So his vote for McGill would not count.
Yeah, I did, then Strike McGill was the last vote.
Would be one.
Okay.
All right, okay.
All right, so Mara McGill only had one vote.
Right.
Okay. All right, did you get that, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, John?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, Mr. Dean has been appointed.
I did, I did get that, yes.
Okay, Mr. Dean is appointed. Now we have one slot left. Everyone has, everyone has one vote, and we will continue voting until a candidate has a majority of the vote. So we would begin again.
Just one vote, right?
We just have one vote now.
Well, we still do it alphabetically.
And we still do it alphabetically, and I still think we do call Ms. McGill's name.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
Does everyone agree with that, from the perspective of parliamentary procedure?
Do we, even though she only got the one?
I think so, I think so.
All right, Tom Brown.
Wait, wait.
We're voting for Tom.
You only get one vote.
We get one vote.
I'm gonna get one vote.
You get one vote, okay. Tom Brown. Tom Brown has one vote. Melvin Burgess.
Burris.
Burgess, hm?
Burris.
Ah.
That's three. Okay, Chuck Lifer. One, two, three. Chuck Lifer has three votes. Mara McGill has zero votes. So Mara is, not there. Okay. Now, how, is it between, how do you do this?
Well, I can, I can just read you the ordinance, Madam Mayor, and it says, "If only one appointee is to be selected, the voting shall continue until one nominee receives a majority of the votes cast." So the intent of the ordinance appears to be that you will continue this exercise until someone is appointed, and if you just get tired of it and decide not to do it, then you will move on and come back to it at another meeting. That is the only two options that I know. If there's anybody who wants to weigh in from a parliamentary procedure standpoint, I'd.
Clarification, there's two nominees now?
Technically, there's still four.
Technically, there is still four.
Oh, technically, there's still four, okay.
But we can.
But I thought we would just.
Right.
Take the two highest vote counters. Can we, can we?
I, I don't think.
Can we buy a vote? Can we do that?
No. You cannot buy, did you say buy a vote as after today's newspaper headlines from Charlotte? No.
BY, not BYUY, so.
No, I think the intent.
How about a vowel? Can I buy a vowel?
I think the intent of the ordinance is, the person who voted for Mr. Brown this next time around is supposed to change their vote, hopefully. But I think that the mayor pro tem is supposed to call all four names.
Okay.
All right? Fair enough.
That's the intent.
That's the intent.
Okay, and we're gonna still do it alphabetically.
Correct.
Okay, so now we're back to Tom Brown. If you want to appoint Tom Brown to the ABC Board, raise your hand. Tom Brown has zero votes, okay? Melvin Burgess?
Burris.
Burris.
Ah.
You? Burgess.
The mayor votes for Mr. Burris.
Okay, if you want to appoint him to the ABC Board, raise your hand. One, two, three, four.
That's four.
That's it.
Okay, but I have to go through this, okay? Chuck Lifer. If you want to appoint Chuck Lifer to the ABC Board, raise your hand. Chuck Lifer has two votes. Mara McGill. If you want to vote, appoint Mara McGill to the ABC Board, raise your hand. One vote.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Burris has been appointed, and that will conclude the ABC appointments. You are, of course, welcome to stay on for the other appointments and the rest of the meeting, that is up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, are they gonna go back to, well, actually, I don't mean to hold anything up, but as far as nine, eight, it's been referred to, maybe I should listen to it, because I don't, I haven't read it.
Are we doing the other appointments?
Well, do we need to finish item 10?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Right. I would like to finish the appointments, and we are almost through on them.
Yes, we are. Let's go ahead and finish the item 10.
Thank you.
And that is Farmers Market Advisory Board. If there are any nominees from the floor, please raise your hand. Okay? There are no nominees for our Farmers Market Advisory Board. Historical District Commission?
Next time, I have two people supposed to get me, they promised a resume, and I haven't gotten them yet.
All right, so this will come up again?
Yes, next meeting.
At our June meeting, June 20th, I think, or whatever.
Seventeenth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Historical District Commission, there's one vacancy, if you have a nomination.
We just talked about that, said that we'd bring it up at the 17th.
Oh, I thought that was Farmer Market.
No, no, Historic District, I had two.
All right, all right. Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner, Councilman McIntyre has two possible appointees for the Historical District Commission, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay. Planning Commission, Ward Four, do you have anybody for that position?
I'd like to, I'd like to bring forth the name of Ms. Pam Goode, G-O-O-D-E.
Did you hear that, Mr. Mayor?
No, I did not.
Pam Goode, G-O-O-D-E.
Kim?
Pam, P-A-M.
Pam Goode, yes, okay, fine, okay, go right ahead.
Okay, would you like to give us any information about her and put her name in as a nominee?
I just know Ms. Goode through her volunteer work in the community, working with the Community Watches and so forth. She's expressed interest prior to serving on a board such as the Planning Commission, has a very, very eager attitude to learn, and so I think that she would make a good representative in that she doesn't have background experience with building or development per se, but would bring that kind of average citizen, unique viewpoint to a board that already has development and so forth on it. So I think it brings a balance to that board. She's certainly been involved in our community, and like I said, is very eager to learn and very willing to serve, so.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
For the record, the second isn't required, but you can do it as a matter of custom.
It's a ward appointment.
No, no, sir.
It's a nomination.
It's a nomination, it's an appointment, just like we've talked about tonight. Now, we have a custom of the person from, the council member from the ward bringing forward a name, and you all have traditionally appointed.
That's right.
Whoever that council person does, but you don't have to. The only question I wanted to ask, Councilman Pierceall, is the requirement of the Planning Commissioner is that he or she live in the ward, so I just want for the record that she.
She does live in the ward.
Okay.
All right, for the record, we have a nominee, and we have a second, which is not necessary, but there is a second.
Now, technically, since we've been over this whole 2-62 tonight, other members of council could nominate someone else for Ward Four's Planning Commission seat, although that's not your custom, all right?
Okay.
So the question now would be, are there any other nominations? And if there's not, we close nominations.
Okay, is there any other nomination for Ward Four Planning Commission? If not, we will close the nomination, and all in favor of?
I have a question.
Pardon me?
Before a vote.
Question.
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, you mentioned a little bit about her background. Is she employed?
Yes, she is.
And what is her employment?
I can't remember.
Okay.
I'm sorry, off my head, I can't remember. I have a lot of her information written down, but.
Okay. And you said she was involved with what?
Community watch.
Community watch?
Yes.
Okay.
She's very involved with the community watch programs, and has a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
She comes highly recommended by Jennifer Davis.
Okay.
Who I, most of us probably know Jennifer for her involvement.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand, thank you. That's.
Ah.
Ah. Thank you, that's unanimous. Ward Five?
I'll do that next time.
Okay. Councilman McIntyre will appoint Ward Five next council meeting. Zoning Board of Adjustment, are there any nominations from the floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Melanie Steins, she is now an alternate on the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
I had a question about this position. There's several notes that we've gotten from staff that says her attendance is good. But in looking at that, and I think you have.
Have a tendency.
How many meetings did the Zoning Board of Adjustment have so far?
Well, she, let me first say that she was appointed, reappointed, and for July 1st, 2011, they had, that year, 12-month period, she missed five, they had six meetings, she missed five.
I just want to, can we clarify who we're talking about? Are we talking about Ms. Steins?
No, Ms. Vaca.
Ms. Martine Vaca.
Okay. Because it says she's interested in serving another term.
Yeah.
So I wanted to find out, and it says her attendance is good, but I noticed on that, we had gotten information previously about, so making one out of six meetings, staff considers that good?
If, the Board of Adjustment is an unusual organization, and Mr. McIntyre was actually a member of that many years ago. You actually have alternates and regulars, and so you actually have twice as many potentially as you need for a hearing. You only need the five, but it is based upon availability. You'd actually almost have to talk to Drew to see whether, you know, who you had called first and how that works, but that's the one, and it's actually by state statute, you're supposed to have twice as many.
You have to have, you have to have five, and you have to have five alternates.
Alternates. So you, they, sometimes it's a little squirrely to figure out really.
Let me say also that during a 12-month period, according to the rules that you read in the appointments book, if you have less than 60% attendance, you're supposed to be automatically off. And she did that. Now, I want to go on and say that the next year, to be all fairness, from July 1, 12 to June 30, 13, she had a perfect attendance. This year, they've had two meetings, and she missed one. And Ms. Steins is an alternate, and she filled in for her at that time. And what I'm gonna propose is that we make Ms. Vaca an alternate after we have a vote, still keep her on, but if she would be willing to do that. And let Ms. Steins, since she's available, they meet in the mornings, and she works for herself, she would have plenty of time to attend the meetings. Whereas Ms. Vaca is a planning director in Lowell, and may have trouble getting off to come to the meetings, I don't know, but anyway, that's my logic. She, and Ms. Vaca missed six meetings out of 16, which was a 62.5% attendance, in three years.
Are there any other nominations from the floor? Any discussion? All in favor of appointing Melanie Steins as into the Zoning Board of Adjustment as a, not as an alternate, but as a?
Full member.
Voting member, whatever.
Full member.
Full member, raise your right hand.
Mr. Mayor, how do you vote?
I'm sorry, I lost about half of that.
Okay, there were no other nominations, so the vote is to approve Ms. Steins for the Board of Adjustment. It's 6-0 so far.
And what happened to the other lady?
Mr. McIntyre says, immediately following this vote, he's gonna put her name in nomination as the alternate to the Board of Adjustment. Is that correct, Mr. McIntyre?
Why is that?
He went through some concerns he had about Ms. Vaca's ability to attend the Board of Adjustment meetings, which are during the day. She's the planning director for the City of Lowell, and, you know, her attendance statistics over, I'm gonna get the dates wrong, over an extended period of time indicate that she'd missed several meetings, whereas Ms. Steins has been able to fill in and will be there during the day. And so by switching them, we think that the attendance statistics will be better for And so by switching them, we think that the attendance statistics will be better for the regular members, and then if we need to pull Ms. Vaca as an alternate, she'll be available.
Okay, well, the question was answered that was asked at the last meeting about the lady's attest, and I happened to just accidentally run into her, and she does, she's been on the board for nine years, Ms. Vaca, and she is a resident Gastonia, but she mistakenly, according to Mr. McIntyre, put her work address in, which I ask her not to do anymore, which is the town of Lowell, First Street in Lowell. And of course, there were others there that had their work address there too. So I didn't, I don't, I didn't know so much about, and of course, Melanie Steins would be wonderful. So therefore, I go along with that, but I did want the council to know that this lady, even though she had her address down that way, maybe we, maybe the staff should watch that much closer, like Mr. Dixon, and his South New Hope Road, and of course, he lives in Gardner Park, and that was right beside her. So I don't want to, I don't want that to hold that against her, but she is a planner for the town of Lowell, and said she has been for nine years. Now, regarding her attendance, you know, I think that maybe both of these ladies can work together.
Okay.
Alright, so it's unanimous.
So it is a unanimous vote. And Mr. McIntyre, would you like to make another motion?
Martin, I'd like to nominate Martine Vaca for an alternate position. And I think we might have some more vacant alternate positions if, maybe at the next meeting, you might have some names. Maybe we can get the staff to let us know how many vacancies there are. Vacancy alternate, since you're supposed to have five. And I know that Mr. Pearson has, very often has to call on Ms. Steins or other alternates, like Bob Biggerstaff. Biggerstaff, he served on the Zoning Board of Adjustment, a full member for many, many years, and he's enjoyed continuing to serve as an alternate. And they call him occasionally, he comes, he's very dependable. But Martine Vaca is an alternate, I nominate her.
Are there any other nominations as an alternate member for the Zoning Board of Adjustment? If none, all in favor of appointing Mrs. Vaca?
V-A-C-C-A.
Okay, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, raise your right hand, thank you.
As an alternate.
As an alternate, yes, sir.
And Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote in the affirmative for that motion?
As an alternate, Ms. Vaca?
Yes.
Yes, I would.
Alright.
That's unanimous.
That's unanimous.
Okay, and that takes care of item ten.
And we're through with the appointments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do you want me to hang around for the nine A, or you want me just to hang up?
That is totally up to you, that is at your discretion, Mr. Mayor.
Well, maybe I ought to hear it, I'll be quiet, or I'll try to.
Alright, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Brendan's going to go back to that, okay.
Right. Item number nine A, update on recreation payment in lieu of fee, presented by Assistant City Manager Flip Bomadere.
You know, I think because the mayor is listening, that normally we'll just do a general summary, but I think in this case, we'll probably need to read the entire, because it's not very long. And I think we'll just read it into record so that the mayor can hear. And Flip, do you want me to do it, or are you doing it? Oh, okay, alright, so this is the follow-up to Parks and Recreation Fee Discussion, June third, two thousand and fourteen. At its May twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, city council meeting, the staff was directed to continue to research aspects of the Parks and Recreation Fee. The following questions and staff responses are presented for further direction by the mayor and city, direction by the mayor and city council. And by the way, this item was requested to be added onto the city council agenda by Councilman Kimble. Alright, first, can fees be applied to all land, property transfers in lieu of just newly constructed residential units? And the answer is, North Carolina only allows the city the authority to apply park and rec fees to new subdivisions only. So you can't do that, we don't have the statutory authority. Second, when is the park and rec fee paid slash collected by the city? While the ordinance mentions collection fees at the final plat approval, this fee has been paid at the issuance of the building permit. And for all those folks that were involved in this process back when this was passed, it was the intention that it would not be really the developer, but actually the builder, whenever you got to the building permit. Otherwise, what would happen is you would have a large number of payments all at one time. So the intent initially, from what I understand, is at the building permit. And so the staff recommendation is that the ordinance be revised to reflect the current practice of fee payment at the building permit issuance phase. The third question is, what should the parks and rec fee amount, what should that be? Staff concurs that there are presently too wide a variance in the fee amount between various tracts of land being developed. However, the methodology and how the fee is calculated is consistent with both statutory requirements as well as the industry standard. And again, as we discussed before, there is a statutory requirement that we use this formula based on value, so we have to do that. But the amount, or the actual maximum and minimums, things like that, we can adjust. So what we are recommending here, and some of this is based upon the conversation that we had at our last city council meeting, that the ordinance be revised to reflect that the fee in lieu of dedication shall not be less than two hundred dollars per dwelling unit, nor more than four hundred per dwelling unit. Then the fourth question is, when is land value determined in terms of calculating a parks and rec fee? The staff recommendation is that the land value be determined at the preliminary plat phase. Setting a minimum and maximum fee will further support and provide consistency for that land value determination. That is the most practical, pragmatic way to do it. As we've been talking to our staff in terms of, there was some conversation about doing it at the final plat. By then, all the numbers are really hard and fast. Preliminary plat gives, I think, the builder and everyone involved, a little developer, a little more information about, upfront, about what the costs are going to be. So that was, we didn't intend to have this on this agenda, but this is the, this is really where the staff, answering some of the questions that the council raised at the last meeting, and be certainly glad to answer any questions. I'm here, Flip, and also Chuck as well.
Okay, I have, I requested this to be put on the agenda. The first question that I see that has been brought up, but was not really addressed in the responses, is the staff's perspective on the Planning Commission vote to repeal the PIL policy and ordinance.
What is the staff's opinion of the Planning Commission?
That is, what is, in other words, what would the repeal do to the budget?
Oh, it would, if you took those funds away, you wouldn't have that for capital projects in recreation. Then your capital projects for recreation really have to come out of tax dollars or sales tax, or, you know, you just lose that other option for capital projects.
Okay, secondly, I believe it was Councilman Pierceall had brought up at the last discussion that we had about this, sending that at the time of closing, and that the person or persons that are purchasing the property would go ahead and pay that in lieu of the builder at the time of closing, is that correct, huh?
Something, but.
I don't want to paraphrase, but I think that was.
No, you're correct, but mine was, it would be something that every home purchaser would pay. It was my intent in the discussion was to find an equitable way to distribute this. I don't want to see the city lose funds for capital projects and parks, that's not my intent anyway. It's to find a more equitable way to distribute the need for these funds and a way to accrue these funds or gather these funds, as opposed to just every time we need money for something, slapping it on the new home builders. So that would be, but it would, I think since then, we have found out that you can't do any type of fee like that unless it is on a new construction, and that's a North Carolina General Assembly statute.
Ed or Ash, is there an alternative fee that would accomplish a similar goal and objective that, as Councilman Pierceall indicated, could work with the other homes that are being sold that might lessen the burden on the new home builders that are trying to get a number of these projects restarted within the community?
I don't know of any way, because all of our authority that we have, we get from the General Assembly. The only other way that you, I mean, you can charge higher user fees to some degree, and try to attack it that way, but that, we have the authority. But I don't think we have any authority, because they actually restrict, that authority was actually granted for a while, and the General Assembly pulled it back, and so I don't know of any other way, Ash?
I do not believe we do, Councilman Kimble.
Thank you. Lastly, I'd like to bring up with regard to this, where do we stand, and I see that Mr. Sosby's still in the audience, where do we stand within the ongoing dialogue back and forth? Gerald, do you want to make a comment on that, or could you retake the podium, please? If you'd care to.
Madam Mayor, that's up to you to recognize anybody else from the floor.
Madam Mayor, can we recognize?
Well, since he's already spoke, yes, we will recognize him, but if it's somebody that has not previously spoken, we will not, okay?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
The ongoing dialogue is, we've made our presentations to the Center City Revitalization Committee and had that vote. They said because it was an ordinance change, and Ash, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, because it did require ordinance change, we had to go to Planning Commission for a public hearing. We went through that process, it was tabled at that one, and went to the next Planning Commission, and had a quorum there, or enough people there to go for the vote.
But that, no, that wasn't an advertised public hearing. If we change the ordinance, we're going to have to advertise it, advertise a public hearing at the Planning Commission. Planning Commission will have to vote on it, and then it will come to council. None of that has taken place, all of this was referred to the Planning Commission at the request of council for a recommendation. So it was all informal discussions and informal feedback, and, you know, we will draft an ordinance if council so directs us to start going through the formal procedures, that has not happened yet, Gerald, okay?
Okay, so the, so the public hearing that happened was an informal public?
It was not a public hearing, it was just, it was a regular meeting of the Planning Commission, and it was an agenda item, and we discussed it, and the board took input, but it was not an advertised public hearing in compliance with the law for changing the ordinance.
Okay, so that'll happen, once it goes to council, if that happens, it'll go back to the commission?
We get direction to write something, and they tell us to start it, then it'll start that process.
Then that's where we stand at this point, the Planning Commission at that point voted on it with the informal input of four to two to repeal the program as it stands today.
Okay, what would be the next step in that process then, Ash?
If we get some direction from council as to how to draft the ordinance and what to bring forward to the Planning Commission, we'll have to, you know, put it in ordinance form, which won't take very long at all, and, but the Planning Commission, the next meeting is normally going to be July, and they may cancel that meeting. So you'd have the Planning Commission meeting in August, and then it would go to you at your second meeting in September.
So at this point in time, it is the direction of the city council with regard to this. Because you have the recreation, the recommendation of the Recreation Advisor Committee, the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and so, you know, the information is there, so does the council need any more information? Or are you ready to give direction to actually prepare the ordinance?
Would we do that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I would make a motion to start to draft the ordinance for the accomplishment of that task.
The accomplishment of what task?
The repeal, as was indicated by the Planning Board and also the ordinance committee.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Prior to this meeting, we had a conversation upstairs that said we weren't going to take action on this tonight, especially because it wasn't on the agenda, so we didn't have any other supporting documentation. So I take, you know, kind of take a little bit of offense to the fact that we're acting on something, that we were just looking for a staff update. That's number one. Number two, just as a point of information, the task development force, how many individuals were on that?
How many are on there, Drew?
I'm counting in my head. I believe there's eight or nine, though.
Eight or nine, were they appointed by council?
No, sir.
They are not an official council committee.
How many members of the Planning Commission are on that task development force?
Mr. Stewart is supposed to be a member, is he not?
Yes, he is.
So one.
Jim Stewart's a member, and I think Mr. Fleeman's a member, so I think you have two.
Two, okay, thank you.
Councilman Gallagher.
I thought we were only discussing this as well, I didn't know we were going to be taking this to a vote. I'd like to find out how much money is currently designated in the budget and all for capital projects for recreation. One, and two, we haven't even hammered out what the fee in lieu, and land dedication shall not be less than two hundred and more than four hundred, I mean, is it somewhere in the middle, is it three hundred? Is it a designated fee? Or what do we say, this house is built more expensive than that house? And we're just going to arbitrarily just sign, you get two hundred, you get four hundred? I mean, I'm not seeing anything that's hammered out here that says what needs to be done. I would like just staff to do a little bit more work on this, so we could find out what needs, you know, why, one, how much are we repealing? How much money are we losing out of the recreation fund that we're going to have to make up in the general fund, which means we'll have to raise taxes, and that's the last thing I want to do. So let's, I say, we look, table it, and let staff look at it, and we could look at this at our next meeting.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And a second, yes, sir. And I have some concerns about repealing this at this point in time, because I'm not sure that we had enough discussion and haven't given the staff the time that they need to give us some other alternatives, if there are any, okay? I don't know that there are, I wish there was a more equitable way to where we could use what Councilman Kimble was talking about of used houses, okay? Or, so, because then that, everybody's paying something, okay? But if the state says we can't do that, then that's not an option. But I would not be in favor at this point of repealing it, because I just don't think we have the information that we need to have. Now, I don't think it needs to take the staff three months to figure out what maybe the options are, and maybe they come back and this is the final option. But I'd like to see the staff do some more work on it, that's just my opinion, okay? So are we ready to vote? Okay, Councilman Pierceall.
I agree that I would like to see more information from staff in that, to find a new, more equitable way, like I mentioned before, but at the same time, if you feel that something's wrong, you don't continue with it till you figure out what's right. You stop the incorrect action. So I'm hearing several members say, well, I don't agree with what's in place, but I want to find something new. Well, if you don't agree with what's in place, let's stop what's in place, find that something new, and then bring that new thing forward. So to me saying, I don't agree with what's in place, but I'm just going to go along with it, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So that's why I would be in favor of repealing it, because, yes, we can bring something else forward at a later date. Staff can have time to work on that, as long as it takes, there's no urgency there. If there's not someone being harmed by it, then no urgency there. But at this point, I would say that if you're not in agreement with it, why continue it?
Oh, Councilman Kimble.
No, I'd say.
I mean, Carolyn, I'm sorry.
Point of clarification, does this vote strike the ordinance?
No, it does not, it merely starts the process of an ordinance with the way Councilman Kimble has phrased it to repeal the Parks and Recreation Fee, so that's probably going to be on the Planning Commission's August agenda, and then would be coming to council the second meeting of September.
Councilman Pierceall, if you're suggesting that this is flawed, but you're going to go through a process of, you know, actually repealing this, and then go back, and then reconstruct it, why don't, why don't you just change it accordingly? Why don't, why don't you just change it accordingly, you know, in one process instead of create two whole processes?
And that's fine, if what goes before the Planning Commission then ultimately comes back to us in August is a change and not a repeal, I'm fine with that. The Planning Commission may vote to change it, not repeal it, but we've got to get the process started at some point. And we're already talking about if we make this vote tonight, it'll come back to us sometime in August. This is the first part of June.
I think you said September.
Or September it would come back to us, so I have no problems doing that. And if ultimately what comes back to us in September is a form that, or a ordinance that staff has worked out and got, Planning Commission discussed it, you know, had all the details worked out, and it comes back to us and it's simply a change and not an actual repeal, I could live with that, fine. But we've got to have a motion to get it started, and in order to get it to the Planning Commission and get staff talking about it and get it back to us for a public hearing, the motion was the repeal on it, and I second that, because if we don't come up with another solution, then I am going to favor the repeal 100 percent. Right now, repeal's fine until we come up with something. But if we don't come up with something, then yes, I'll favor the repeal 100 percent. So, I'm fine with the motion as it was made.
I have a question. Do we have to repeal it, or can we freeze it and not implement it? I mean, because I think what I hear you're saying is that it's being implemented and it's not fair or not the way it needs to be. Can we temporarily put it on, who, oh, okay.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
What the staff was, what the staff was trying to do, one of the things that, there was such a wide variation
Right.
because of the formula, and some of it was producing $2,400 per lot, and others were, you know, less than $100. What we were trying to do is just get it equitable, like your typical lot in the city would be about this or that. And different cities do it different. We looked at Fuquay Varina, and that was between 700 and 1,000. They use that as their difference. And again, the reason we got to go through the value, it's the value of the land. That's the way the general statute drives us, so that's why we have to do it that way. So, we, what we were trying to do was take those extremes out, and so that your average unit, you know, where, you know, if it's one side of town, other side, it's going to be very similar. The span will not be wide. But again, the dollar amount, if Fuquay Varina is 700 to 1,000, this is 200 to 400, you know, that's something the council can set, and then you can find what you feel is a good average and put that there, and then we can move on.
I'm going to call the vote.
Okay, there's a motion to call the vote, call the question, is there a second? All in favor?
Do you wish, do you wish to vote, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'll call the question.
Okay. So, it's unanimous.
Okay, all right. All right, all in favor of the motion which...
Sends to Planning Commission the process of repealing the Parks and Rec ordinance, which is in 1338 of the UDO.
Okay. The call, the question's been called, that's right. Yeah, we can't, okay. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed?
So, that passes four to three, Mr. Mayor, so the ordinance will be prepared for Planning Commission's August agenda.
All right.
All right.
All right.
Have fun at the beach.
Six grandchildren.
Six grandchildren. All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to let you go now, all right?
Thank you very much, and certainly thank everyone for your service.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Night. Okay, item number 11, city attorney's report.
Oh, I think we've had enough legalese tonight. Unless you guys want to go to close session and talk about a few cases, you know? We can stay till 11 o'clock, you know?
I agree.
No? Okay, no report.
Okay. City managers' report?
Just a few things. Art Space update. Art Space has been looking at other options. We're going to be meeting with them later this week via telephone with the folks, and they may, we may be able to report something back to you soon. But we were encouraged that they were looking at other options. Secondly, with regard to Loray, Loray is looking for occupancy this summer in a modest way, just with a leasing office. They think September is when they're going to be really having some level of occupancy. The problem is, when you go in that building, it is just an amazing building, and it is so big. And the developers are working hard, but it's just a very big project, a lot of moving parts. And they're, we're also now starting on the police facility. They have finished the demolition there, and so now we'll be working rather intensively during the summer to work on the details of the Police Department building, and very, yes.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
When I was in high school, in the first year of college during the summer, I'd ride my bicycle over there, and Mr. W.G. Henson Senior gave me a job working at a shop. And I was just a kid, and I used to fill that pool up, do you remember the pool out there?
Oh, I know the pool, yes.
The last time I worked there, I filled the pool up, had to clean it out and fill it up, took about two hours, and we'd go back to the dope wagon, you know, remember that? You gotta be careful saying dope wagon now, but anyway.
And they had the clubhouse up there.
It was a clubhouse, right there, and right across the street. But I just thought I'd mention, I've been all over that mill. A commodity stopped up, they'd send me up there to try to unplug it. But I had a lot of fun going all over that mill. We moved machinery and all that, and I had a lot of fun working there. And it was hard to get a job back then, too, so I was lucky to have it.
And then the last thing is tomorrow is Town Hall Day. So, I'm going to go up to Raleigh Town Hall. It's also the day that the Gaston Chamber of Commerce has selected for its day up there. So, kind of kill two birds with one stone. And there, the legislature is moving fast. They move fast on our piece of legislation. I will meet with our local delegation up there with the chamber and report back to the City Council at the next meeting. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Council report. No report, Mr. McAtterill? Mr. Pierceall?
Just a couple of things. The ARC, and I've slipped my mind what ARC stands for.
It's not active.
Right. We're good.
It's just an acronym, it was an acronym.
The annual ARC softball game is a week from Saturday, and they are, I'm going to be participating in that. They are very limited on elected officials and have asked me to relay that to any of you that would like to play. You only have to play three innings.
You got to bring a glove?
Well, yeah, you got to bring a glove, you got to catch the ball.
Barehanded.
But you only play three innings, but they would like more participation. So, if you're interested, just send me an email or phone call me this weekend.
I think it's $150 if you're going to play.
I don't even know what it is.
I've got the list that they charge.
But let me know if you're interested later. And then also, the cemetery over near Highland, they said there used to be signs up notating the hours of the cemetery, and also when the flowers would be removed from the graves, there used to be plaques up. And I've been told that the plaques are gone now, and no one knows when the flowers are going to be removed, so some people will put silk arrangements out there or whatever it is, and they go back and they've been removed. And they're, it's not that they're being stolen, they're all being removed, it's a schedule. The schedule's just no longer posted, so they don't know when that is. So, they're requesting if those plaques can be put back up, posting the hours and the schedule of the flowers. And also, the trash cans that used to be out there near the gates are gone, and they would like to know if trash cans can be put back out there so that they can help keep the cemeteries clean as well.
Okay, take care of it.
And that's, and one last thing, we lost a great citizen this past week, and Ms. Peggy Ferguson passed away. And Ms. Ferguson was a dear friend of mine and one reason I got into politics. So, I certainly want to ask everyone to remember her family in their prayers. Her funeral will be Thursday. The family will be receiving friends at, I think it's Costner?
Costner, Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00.
Wednesday, 5:00 to 7:00, and then the funeral will be Thursday at 2?
At 2:00. At Pleasant Grove Baptist in Bowling Green, and they're receiving people for 30 minutes just prior to that ceremony, so 1:30, Bowling Green on Thursday.
But for those, there's probably very few people that don't remember Ms. Peggy Ferguson or her husband. So, I just wanted to...
She was a recreation employee.
Right, so I wanted to let everyone know that she had passed away. And that's all?
Councilman Gallagher.
Yes, was at the Memorial Day service down at, I guess, the Memorial Park over there. Mayor Bridgman was there in attendance, and so was Councilman McAtterill. It was a great service. They had the gentleman from North Carolina Veterans Affairs speak, and he did an excellent job, without a doubt. There was no doubt about it. Councilman McAtterill's wife was there, she presented wreath for the Gaston... Colonial dames of 17th century, and it was an excellent service. I mean, there must have been about 1,000 people there. Oh, Sarah, that's her niece, Sarah Nobit, she did that twice, she did it last year as well. She did a good job. Also, on the advice of Councilman McAtterill, I was able to help support Ashbrook to do their first play downtown at the Pavilion on May 23rd. They did a play called Freak. It was to bring suicide awareness for kids in high school. And also Hunter Huss came, and they did singing routines and also had some dance performers on the Pavilion as well. So, that went really well without any in-kind services, but it went well. And I just wanted to say that, thank them, and thank you, Mayor Protemp, you did a wonderful job tonight.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Councilman Carolyn?
No report.
No report. Councilman Kimball?
Thank you, madam. Two items, number one, Ed, I don't know if anyone else on the council has gotten a communication regarding a number of violations in the Hunter Lane area, has anyone else got that? There were some photographs, and there were, I believe, two complainants involved. I did forward that to our city manager. Ed, I believe the appropriate departments are conducting fact-finding at this time and are going to go ahead with any enforcement actions they deem necessary.
Right, and actually, Councilman Pierceall also gave me those pictures, and we have a code case and a zoning case going on. Basically, it's a paving operation that's in, that's also has apparently cut a road that's not supposed to be there. So, there's a couple of things that we're working, also around the dumpster, there's some other work. So, we've got two or three cases going on with that. And we've also contacted the property owner, and we're working with the property owner, the one that complained.
And I assume at the appropriate time, you'll be able to come back to us with a resolution? Thank you. Have we been in contact with the complainants there? She did have some contact information on her letter, I believe that we did that.
I was told that we, I was told that we did.
Thank you. Secondly, my wife and I just returned from a trip to the Northeast Family Reunion, and I know that many of you watched in horror at different times when we saw the ravages of Hurricane Sandy and what it did to the Jersey Shore. We were very, we were blessed to be able to go back to some places that we went to when we were dating and that were really, really tremendously impacted, and happy to say that the renovation is underway, things are bustling again, and it's been a, quite a transformation. That's all I have.
Well, you are the Jersey Boys, right?
The Three Seasons.
Oh, Three Seasons, okay.
Mayor Protemp? Can I say, Chief Connolly, did, during, Councilman Gallagher reminded me of this, when we were doing the police memorial activities here, I was actually in DC, which obviously has the National Police Memorial Week, and it was really, really exciting to see all the uniformed police officers and see what all they were involved in. But did, and you may or may not know, did Gaston County have any representatives in DC that week?
Not that I know of.
There was two motorcycle cops in a motorcade. We stopped and watched one particularly really long motorcade, and of course, they were driving by. But the uniforms, the bikes, everything, and even the lettering as they went by, we were all like, wait, wait, wait. We think that was Gaston County, so we weren't sure, but...
We have sent people in past years, but we did not send anyone this year, and I don't think anyone from the county went either.
Okay, well, thank you for that information. But it was very neat to see that in DC and see all the events going on there.
Okay, just a couple of things. Phase two of the Gastonia Optimus Club Park has begun. City staff put some heavy-duty equipment over there, and today they were down in the brush, and so that, if you get an opportunity, go by there, that's ongoing. No. I would like, and I'm sure the council will join me, in wishing Councilman Kimball happy birthday on Thursday. It is June the 5th, and we hope you have a happy day and many, many more. Reminding everybody about the downtown concert this Friday night from 8:00 to 11:00. The Tams. It's going to be a neat, neat night, so I hope everybody can be there. Also, the city staff is repairing the Vance Street sidewalks that were broken up and not in one place, okay? So, I appreciate what the staff is doing over in that area, and if y'all go by there and see Loray just from the outside, it's just amazing what's been done, and the cleanup within the area is taking place, and the community has noticed that a whole lot. So, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
All in favor.
Here is the list.
That's why... And I'll be by, I'll bring seven...
I got to do my...
Todd, he gets 70 bucks.
Dave does, okay, give it to Dave, but not...